Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have the prayer and the pledge by Councilman Dustin Swier.
Let us bow our head and say the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it seems in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. And forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, and indelible by liberty and justice for all. We'll go.
Mayor Protim Ricky Gonsalas.
Present.
Councilmember Brooke Marcot.
Here.
Councilmember David Broussard.
Here.
Councilmember Marlon Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember Deidra Ledbetter.
Here.
Councilmember DeeDee Johnson-Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Dustin Swier.
Here.
Thank you. Our first item is public comment. I'll take this time to ask you to please put your phones on vibrate. Remember, there's no back and forth on public comment. We just listen. And if you're going to comment on Little Brooklyn, I'll ask you to wait till the next agenda item, which is coming up, because that's where we have the public comment for that issue. So, Madam Clerk, if you can check the cards and see if anybody's talking about something else besides Little Brooklyn, which is a good thing to talk about.
Mr. Bell? Were you coming to talk about Little Brooklyn?
No.
Okay.
All right, well, come on up. As long as it's an agenda item.
Yeah, agenda team.
Yes, sir. Okay.
Good afternoon.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just want to know, and I know the people in the community want to know. They request that DOTD salvage all ornament lights, poles along Hopkins Street. The thing about that, that's fine. But what about afterward? And how will it be and how will it look when the job is completed? Will they have lights or are the people just going to have to play in the door? So I just need to know from either, I know it's probably out of the city hand. It's DOTD to the government. But that's something that we need to know. They want to take the poles out because of the drainage improvement. We need that as well. But also, at the same time, we need to know what's going to be done afterwards. So that's important, you know. A lot of people can't, God give me a gift sometimes to speak. And I use that to help, help my community and help my city. And they need to know something, you know, from the city council, what's going to happen after all the lights are taken out. Because I'm sure you know that area is really not up to par like we want it. We're working on it. And thanks to the council, the city council, it's going to work. But we need to know what's going to happen afterward. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Any other comment cards?
No, sir. Everything else is for 3A.
Okay, great. Then we'll move on. Item 2A.
Acceptance of the minutes of January 4th, 2022, as published on January 14th, 2022.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mayor Protim Ricky Gonsalas, second by, I think it was, Councilman Dustin Swier. Is there any discussion on our minutes of January the 4th? Hearing and seen none. I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. Madam Clerk? Item 3A.
Public hearing on ordinance number 2022-01, An Ordinance Accepting Donation From 5K Property Management LLC To The City Of New Iberia For The Purpose Of Creating Little Brooklyn Neighborhood Plaza.
Do I have a motion to open our public hearing?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed and a second by Councilman Dustin Swier. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on this item, Little Brooklyn Park? And if you do, and I know some people do, please come up, state your name, and give us your thoughts.
I have a letter someone sent in. Do I read that at this point or do I wait?
Well, let's hear from the public comment people first and then, I don't know. We've never read a letter for a public comment. I'll see if we can, but let's.
Wanted to be here but couldn't, so.
Well, let's start with the people who are here. You think we can?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, well then.
If the councilwoman wants to read a letter and it's a public hearing, sure.
Okay, good. Well, then let's the people, let's hear from the people who are here and then you can read their letter.
Sounds good.
Good. You may approach and.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Daisy August. I live at 307 Rosier Street. I've been a resident there for 72 years and I took care of most of the children in Little Brooklyn. So I think that they really need a plaza for them to stand under so they can go to school dry and warm. I stood there hours with them in the sun, in the cold, in the rain, especially the rain, the umbrellas turning on the wrong side, the children crying. I'm holding one on my right side, one on my left side, to keep them from crying. So I think it is very necessary and to keep them dry and safe. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Dot Antoine. Echoing like Ms. Daisy, I've been there for 72 years. But also, I'd like to compliment everyone, all the workers in Little Brooklyn. I sit many days and I think of the ones that have gone on from Little Brooklyn. Just this past week, we lost another one, Mrs. Bryant, that we'll be funeralizing this coming week. Yet, things are still happening, thanks to a lot of people. We do have some go-getters with this group. The work that has been done is being done and will be done. The little park is a necessity. Ms. Daisy told you all, we stood there many days waiting for buses, dipping, dodging the rain, the sun, and oh. So that will be a plus, a big one. And with your all's help, we hope to get it done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and all other council members here.
Good evening.
I don't have a history of 72 years. I've only been here for 15 years in the community, but I raised five children and sent them down to the end of the street. But they already talked about the rain and the sun and all that, so I don't really want to go into that. But I think because a city is a whole and it's got little parts, and every part makes the whole better. So the aesthetics of one area also benefits another. Because when people come to a town, they only see certain spots. But if they see that spot and that spot is all the cliffage and tearing down and run down, they get a bad view of that particular city. So what I'm saying is for the aesthetics of that area and for the children, it would be beneficial, not only for us, but for the town.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Pastor Sean Boudreaux from Our Savior's Church in New Iberia. And this is a project, Little Brooklyn Initiative, that we are excited to get behind, not only with our volunteer base, but our resources. And I'm excited about the plaza being adopted. I'm hoping that that goes forward. I think it's a critical part of the entire Little Brooklyn Initiative. One of the things that I've noticed since I've started getting involved, and which, by the way, it's a neighborhood that I live in. So it means something to me, more than just something we're putting our hand behind. But when I first started hearing about the bus stop in the plaza area, I think it's necessary, as I go down Henry, I see what the kids, where they walk from, what they have to go through and the elements. And I know each of you know this, but I just wanted to point it out. These streets are too narrow for the buses to go down. So the only option is this area that we're proposing for the plaza. So I should hope you guys see the same as the ones that have spoken and I myself. And I look forward for us to be able to get behind not only the plaza, but other things coming in the Little Brooklyn area. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak on this item? Well, thank you all very much. Now, we will ask a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Do I read the letter?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Brooke. Sorry.
Okay. This is from Mr. Jonathan Norris. His letter says, "Shuttlebend Homeowner Association fully supports and is excited about the urban park project on Henry Street. We believe projects like this are great progress to improve our community, in particular, our neighbors in Little Brooklyn. We thank the council and mayor for their consideration of this project."
Thank you, Brooke.
Sure thing.
Now, if anyone has anything, has nothing else to say? Then I would ask for a motion to close our public hearing.
Motion.
Okay. Motion by the Mayor Protim Ricky Gonsalas and a second by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed. Thank you all very much. Madam Clerk, 3B.
Public hearing on special ordinance number 2021-2022-04, Amending The Budget For Costs Associated With The Installation Of Gen Set At Teet Bayou Waste Water Treatment Plant.
Do I have a motion to open our public hearing?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilman David Broussard and a second by Councilman Dustin Swier. Is there anyone here to speak on this item? Hearing seen none? I need a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Councilman David Broussard and Councilwoman Brooke Marcot. Thank you. Madam Clerk, we move on to 4A.
Ordinance number 2022-01, An Ordinance Accepting Donation From 5K Property Management LLC To The City Of New Iberia For The Purposes Of Creating Little Brooklyn Neighborhood Plaza.
I need a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Marlon Lewis and a second by Mayor Protim Ricky Gonsalas. Is there any discussion on this item? Yes, sir. Mr. Broussard, Councilman Broussard.
I see firsthand exactly what they're talking about on Henry Street. I'm working my last year of my bussin'. It's been 10 years I've been driving down Henry Street. Firsthand, 6:15, 6:20 in the morning. 25, 30 kids walk to Henry Street. It was raining, nothing to get under. So I know firsthand this will be a great item. I'm glad to see it before I retire and be glad to see it here. So it's needed a lot, just to keep it safe and clean and make it work, the whole area. Please go to these parks and help us keep it clean. If there's any mischief or anything at all, dig it out, throw it out the park. We need to keep it good for the rest of the kids throughout the years to use this to get on these buses. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just have a comment to make. We see a lot of initiatives throughout our community, and this is a prime example of initiative with support. And with that support, it comes to fruition. So I want to thank all of you for what you're doing, because this is really coming to fruition. We have a lot of great things coming forward also in Little Brooklyn as well. And I'm excited to see this one on the books as well. So I want to thank all of you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Councilman Reed.
Like everybody else, I'm excited about this new development for our Little Brooklyn area. I mean, they're kind of the group that actually inspired me to start the Downtown Neighborhood Association. So I appreciate their leadership on this and showing how a community can come together and build something to make everything better in their area. The only question I was going to ask is, did the Little Brooklyn Initiative group have any say in the design? Were they able to participate in that?
They gave us a, yeah. They gave us a schematic design and we utilized it. We're not totally finished talking about that. We, our architects will handle it, because they handle all of our projects. They have a floor plan and are working on a couple of elevations that we will get to them so that they can have some input in it. It's very difficult to design a project around the, you don't know how much money you have. So you can't, you can draw something that is, you know, elaborate and that is really nice and that you want to do. But I'm a realistic person. We're going to do what we can afford to do. But we definitely going to do something, because it's such an important project. So, and we all are behind it. I don't want anybody to ever think we're not. But to attach a design that we don't know that we can achieve would not be fair. Because I can't go to the person who's donating the property and say, you're getting this. And then, two years later, we have money or next year or whatever, and they get something that is scaled down. It's not fair to the person who's donating the property. So we've had some discussions back and forth. All of the elements are there. It's just going to be what they look like and how many things, how many options we can add, if you will. And we won't know that until we know how much money we're getting. It's a very unique situation that they're donating the property. They've raised most of the money to demo the building, and the building has asbestos, so that's expensive. They don't quite have all the money. But we believe in this project and we are going to put up the balance that they don't have to demo the building. Because it's very rare that someone comes with a building. People, everybody wants to give us a problem. No offense, but they constantly want to give us stuff. I have, every week, I have somebody trying to give me a building. But it's very rare that a group says, not only are we giving you a building, we're trying to help you pay for the problem, so that the gift is not, you know, a Trojan horse. So we'll get the building, we'll come up with a little money to add to the demo. We'll demo it. The owner has a choice. We had a meeting a week ago. They have a choice. We could take it now, demo it, hold the lot, cut the grass on it, insure it, have it there, and wait to see how much money we get. Or, what the owner elected to do is say, well, let's wait and see what we get out of capital outlet. So we made that as one of our priorities. We'll see what, how much money we get. And then we'll convene again and be able to say, here's the plan, based on the money we have, this is what we think we can do. If you agree with it, donate it to us. We'll pull the trigger and tear it down and we'll begin the work to start the project, like we do with all of our other projects. But we're communicating the whole way along. But again, it's a unique situation that I'm not going to promise, overpromise what we're going to do, because it's not fair. At the same time, I can't build, I can build something quality. I am very concerned, and as a contractor or designer myself, I'm not building anything that needs a lot of maintenance. You know, I'm all into concrete, steel, and I have learned my lesson, okay? I mean, I tell that story all the time. As a private citizen, I built the boardwalk, did a grant for the boardwalk. It was all made out of wood. It lasted 20 years. My crews passed it three or four times for free, because it was falling apart. The city does not do as good a job. You get a new group of people here and they want to do new projects. Every, no one wants to do maintenance. Everybody wants to do new stuff. So that's, in a long answer, that's your answer.
Okay. Well, based on what we heard this morning at the exit issues, there's a surplus, so they should get all the money they need.
You know, I'm hoping that. And Marcus is wonderful to work with. Marcus's grandmother, who I know just passed, and my condolences to the family. But Marcus has been behind this project and helping the whole way along. Marcus even called me about two weeks ago and said, give me a list of more projects, because he knew there was more money. So Marcus is a very, very good guy to work with, and he's a hustler. So he is working hard. So I feel pretty comfortable that that money will become.
Excellent. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Very good.
Well, because of the issues you've talked about, the way the ordinance is written, it authorizes the mayor to accept the donation at some future time and to work out the terms and conditions of the improvements on the property. Because we know, after having that meeting with Andara and Mark Kelly.
Yes.
That we have not yet finally agreed on exactly how the thing is going to look. So what you're doing is you're authorizing the mayor to work that out, based on the funding, based on the donor's intent. And I think he was comfortable with that. So we've taken that into account in the ordinance. So it could be that this may be something accepted quickly, accepted later, but you're authorizing the mayor just to handle it.
Excellent. Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
May I just want to contend, commend Dustin in what, you know, you do. You speak, as the councilperson, it's your district. I'd like to see what, you know, you're behind it 100%. We've talked, Marcus and his council is behind it. You know, I kind of grew up in Little Brooklyn. A lot of people don't know that. Ms. Dot and them know that I kind of grew up in the house, you know, with the Delahousses family. My Aunt Peggy lived there in 1980, '82, for a little while. And I roam that neighborhood, the two or three streets. So I feel like I know the neighborhood. So it's a proud, this is a proud moment for me as well to see Little Brooklyn. And I'm saying moment, it's not a moment, because it's a thing that's happening.
That's right.
It's a continuing thing. So this is a proud thing for me to be a part of, you know. And I, we support it, you know, 100%, 100%.
Good. Anybody else? All right, well, then I would ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you all. Good, good. Important step. Madam Clerk, 4B.
Special ordinance number 2021-2022-04, Amending The Budget For Costs Associated With The Installation Of Gen Set At Teet Bayou Waste Water Treatment Plant.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Dustin Swier and a second, who was the second? Councilman David Broussard. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing seen none? Please vote your machines.
Hit the wrong button, guys. Vote again.
Please re-vote your machines. Thank you all very much. Item 5A.
Resolution 2022, I'm sorry, Resolution 22-01, Awarding Contract To Dixie Electric For Electrical Work On The City Slip Shoreline Development Project.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed and a second by Mayor Protim Ricky Gonsalas. Is there any discussion on this item?
Okay, you know, I, okay. So Lois' bid is so much lower than the other two bids.
But we're good, because we threw the bids out, you remember, last time.
Which.
And we could have gone with a much higher bidder. So I feel good, and I've talked to the contractor. They're good to go. And taking the bids, which we've only done a few times, but by y'all helping me and saying, let's rebid it, we got a better price, and they're ready to go.
Okay, but the two bids here are closer to the other bid than it is to this bid.
But I threw the other bids out, because they were too high.
Okay, but my whole point in saying that is, are we going to have a bunch of change orders to get to that and we'll end up at that point anyway?
I don't have a crystal ball. Now, in the last time you asked me this, we had a couple of change orders, but it still was much cheaper. So I feel comfortable, we'll land cheaper. But I can't look into the ground and say there's some unforeseen condition. I can't, you know, but I don't think we will. I really don't. I feel pretty good about it.
What was our, what was our budget number? Do you remember? Because I don't remember the number.
We wanted to, originally, we wanted to do it for 10. And then, when we had a little bidder last time, it was 12, but he backed out. And then the next bidder was much higher.
About 14, actually.
Yeah.
Right.
And then we said, okay, let's rebid it, because I feel my good as a contractor that the price should have been lower. And then it came back, and I like the price now.
All right. We'll have this discussion again when the first change order comes in.
We probably will. We probably will. But again, on the last thing, it worked, and we still were cheaper than we would have been. So.
Okay.
That's the contract at game. And right now, it is very unpredictable. With materials and labor and the way things are, I'm moving on stuff as quick as we can in the letter of the law, because prices keep going up and things keep happening to us that our money's not going as far as it was.
No, I get it.
But I appreciate it.
I understand the whole bid versus change order game too.
And it just feels like sometimes that's the kind of game we're playing.
Right, right. And I do try to police that, because that's the background I come from. We have architects that police it as well. And there are many times that we say, no, that's not, that's not going to work. Or we question and say, you know, I need you to get tighter on that. I need you to reprice it, because that is a, an opportunity for somebody. I'm not saying anybody would, but that's an opportunity for somebody to make a little too much money, let's just say. And so I am cognizant of that, because I don't want that to happen.
Okay.
But thank you. Anybody else? I knew that was coming. And it's a good thing. Anybody else? David, you have anything on this one?
No, no, just questions and anything.
Okay.
Actually, I'm sorry. My question was really for.
Yeah, that's okay.
But you feel comfortable with our contract? I know you've talked to them too.
No, actually, the discrepancy on why the prices are higher is because the contractors were looking at more expensive fixtures than what we were actually requiring. And that's just part of the availability, I guess, in their network of vendors. And so the lower bidder had a better price, and that's what it, it was really mostly on the fixtures.
Same quality?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Okay.
The lower bidder is putting them together and doing some things the way we talked about doing it and the other contractors. No offense, they're good contractors. They just took the easy way and said, I'll just get some more expensive fixtures and I won't have to do, my labor will be lower and I'll just grab off the shelf.
Yeah.
And what they grabbing off the shelf is more money.
Okay.
So if everybody's comfortable, then please vote your machines. Thank you all. Good discussion. 5B.
Resolution 22-03, Approving Certificate Of Substantial Completion On The Teet Bayou Waste Water Treatment Plant Electrical Improvements Project And Authorizing The Mayor To Execute Any And All Documentation In Connection Therewith.
Do I have a motion?
Move.
Motion by Mayor Protim Ricky Gonsalas, second by Councilman Dustin Swier. Is there any discussion on this item?
I'm sure our show director is good with it.
Yeah, we can call Vince up if you want to and ask him.
We good with that, Vince? Everything's good?
Ready to go. All time coming.
All right. Okay. Any other discussion? Then I would ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Vince, for that input. Madam Clerk, 5C.
Resolution 22-04, A Resolution In Support Of Financial Pledge To The Iberian African American Historical Society For An Educational Program To Teach The History Of New Iberia's African Americans To Students.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Marlon Lewis and a double second, really, but who said it first, I already don't know.
Go, DeeDee.
Councilwoman DeeDee Ledbetter. Is there any discussion? And we have Ms. Phoebe Hayes here tonight. Is there any discussion on this item? Want to hear from Ms. Phoebe?
It's a great thing. Very excited about this program.
We are excited.
Yeah.
But my excitement is tempered only by the fact of my gratitude to this council and this mayor for supporting what we have envisioned. And I want to thank Jane Bro for also making sure that this gets done. We just received a notification that the grant was approved, you know, funder, the New Orleans Jazz and Heritage Foundation. But because they had more applications for monies, they were not able to fully 100% fund the grant. We believe strongly it is a very good project and they are able to give us $2,500, correct Jane? And so the council, when I first presented this, pledged 5,000. And so we are asking you to.
Keep our pledge.
In light of the fact that we have reduced funds coming from the New Orleans.
The long and short of it, it was a match and she thought she would be getting 5,000, so we put up 5. Then we talked and talking to Ms. Phoebe, she really can't do the project for less than 7,500.
Well, we can.
Yeah, but it wouldn't be as good. It wouldn't be as good.
We don't, we are hoping to provide services to 25 children.
Right.
Right? With $2,500, we're looking at maybe five kids.
I know.
You know? And that's not fair. And it's a very good project. The whole idea, if you remember, is to teach children from the perspective of my historical society, the history of African Americans, their contributions locally, those significantly, historically significant individuals who bring us great joy and pride here, to teach them about that history and to do it through the arts, right? My society will teach the history free of charge. But we're going to hire professional art teachers to come in and actually teach the children how to depict that history artistically. So this would be a summer project for elementary to high school students. And it's going to go under, as I envisioned it, under the Parks and Recreation Department. And Heather and her staff would be charged with, well, it's up to the city. The city will be charged with the provision of the space and the children will be selected through the Parks and Recreation Department. So. I don't know if all in that y'all understood that I'm asking for just a little bit more money.
I just, I wanted to bring it up as full disclosure that since we had said we'd put 5 up, we really, if we did a match, it would only be 2,500. Jane and I and Ms. Phoebe talked about it and we are asking, can we put the whole 5 up? Because then her project becomes a more quality project. So anyway, but I want to have that out there before we vote or, you know. So now I'll take questions or comments.
I have a question.
Okay, I got a couple of people with their hands up. Go ahead, Dustin.
From the get-go, we were discussing 7,500 total.
We were discussing, we would put up 5, she was trying to get 10.
I asked for 5.
Okay, so my question is, is 75 enough?
I would like us to put up the 5 plus the 2,500 at the grant.
Okay, so we're gonna get it to 10, in other words?
Get it to 10.
Is that, is that, is that what I'm hearing?
No, we're putting up 5, right? Yeah.
Well, I was asking for a little bit more.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm grasping out of the conversation, so that's why I asked if that was enough.
All right.
I'm getting a totally different.
And again, you all understand though, right? My organization, the Iberia African American Historical Society, we get nothing out of this other than our mission is being advanced.
I realize that.
Teaching this important, I know, I know, but teaching this important history.
Okay.
And we're doing it free of charge. But we have to pay our artists and we have to provide the supplies that they will be using to teach the children. Paints cost a lot of money and, and, and what is it they paint on?
Esels.
Canvas?
Canvas and the easel.
So all of that costs money. And we want to make sure that this turns out to be a very good project. And the children at the very end, if you may recall, will do an exhibit. We haven't decided where that exhibit, where the gallery showing will be. Each child will be presenting the history next to their art and that inspired them. But it's, and if we don't use all the money, then of course we won't spend it.
Okay.
But the city is totally in control of that money.
Understand.
Right.
Any other, yes, sir?
I might disagree with her one bit. I just wanted to make sure we're on the same page.
You cleared me up. I thought it was 5 and not 7,500, so that's good, that's good. Anybody else? Yes, sir?
So Ms. Phoebe, you know, congratulations on your efforts because I think it's well taken and in light of the fact that that is government money that we're gonna be appropriating to you to provide this service. The selection of the students, Iberia Parish-wide, citywide, where are you?
Parish-wide.
Okay.
Iberian Parish Schoolchildren. And I did not make a difference as to public, private or whatever.
And the reason I'm saying is that did you solicit Iberia Parish Government for additional funding since you're going parish-wide? Oh, no, seriously, I mean, we're putting up the city money. We're putting up the city money. So I'm asking.
Well, then, okay, so then I understand exactly what you're saying because I didn't think like that.
There's no right or wrong answer, whatever you tell me.
Oh, yeah, there is. Here's, if we had time, yes, we could go to Mr. Richard and ask him to contribute to this.
Okay.
After the fact, right? But what we could do, we could limit it to the city, to the city schools. I'm not sure that's a good idea when it comes to children, though.
It's not, but.
Yeah. So I'm, what I'm going to say is that I defer that decision to you. Remember, the money is not coming to us, it's not coming to me, it is city money, it is public money. So the city can decide if you want to invite the parish to collaborate.
All right, so, and then, and thank you for the answer because I'm not quite sure that we can appropriate money and allocate it to a parish resident when the city collected taxpayer money. And I have to ask you that, but whatever you choose.
Do parish children utilize the Parks and Recreation Department?
Yeah.
And that's a question because I don't know.
You may be very right, you may be right.
Because we don't. We don't differentiate when a kid comes to the park, we don't ask them where they from. Papers, please.
So anyway.
It's okay. I just, I honestly, on a personal level, I would hate to deny any child.
I would too, I'm just, would like to just.
And that's why I pulled myself out of it.
Yeah.
So.
It'll be up to Parks and Recreation.
And at least up to my next question is, what are the criteria? You're gonna have a set criteria to select these 25 kids? Because I'm almost certain you're gonna have a lot more than 25 apply for this.
I know.
So is there gonna be a set criteria or competition or application process? Who's the selection committee?
So right now, we're advertising, we're, it's named Great Portraits in National and Local African American History, a youth art festival. And we send this out to all of Iberia Parish Schools. And the students in those classes in the schools participate. It's totally their choices. Those teachers will give that information to the kids and they will in turn bring those drawings back to either park, City Park or Weston Park or any of the local libraries and then we'll do a judging.
Okay.
And from there, that's when.
Got to work that.
They'll will pick from that.
That's good.
Good, good.
And then some of this we can refine as we go along.
Right.
Because I heard my friend say national, that's not the intent, right? It's a local history.
Because, because we were doing the spin-off.
But you're talking about the original.
Right. We didn't want to not include, so we added local, national and local.
Yeah, I'm gonna clear up, I'm gonna clear up his point first. Because you still have the floor, but basically, we don't differentiate between parish or city kids and there's not a problem with that.
I think you could, but we generally don't.
Okay, good.
And we don't check passports at the parks.
That's what I'm saying, papers, please, you know, I mean, come on.
And, and part of what this is doing is for the kids and part of what this is doing is for the larger community.
That's right, good.
So, no.
Thanks for the clarification, but Ms. Phoebe, I think that's great the way you, but I will, you know, I know you're on a timeline and I think it's gonna work out for you, but I will offer my personal services. If you want to approach the parish council to solicit some funds, give me the information, I will do it for you.
Thank you. I always use more encouragement. Thank you, I'll get back with you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think you were first.
So Ms. Phoebe, do you know what the cost would be per child? Because, you know, would you consider somebody maybe providing scholarships so you can have more than 25 kids participate in this program? So someone wanted to sponsor a kid so that you could have more than. I just feel like there, there's quite a few of us that would probably sponsor a kid so you could have more than just 25 children in the program. Because 25 in the, you got 12,000 kids in Iberia Parish School System. I feel like we might be able to, you know, just cover more than 25.
I, that was one of the concerns that we had also. I just want this to be fair. And when people hear about it, they've already started politicking about their own children or grandchildren. That's not what I want.
Right.
And that's why, I'm sorry, I.
Gave it to them.
I just refer to Heather and Parks and Recreation and I just want it to be fair.
Okay.
And I, the idea, I thought about that. The idea of private donations is great, but then we have to make sure that when the, that the teachers that we hire, that they can handle a certain number. What's the maximum that each, and right now we have three teachers and one actually had volunteered, but we were able to, we had asked for additional funds to cover his salary.
Okay.
But that's something maybe we can work out, you know, with the, with the, with the department and we can see how this can, how we can be fair.
Okay.
You're absolutely right, okay?
All right.
DeeDee actually asked part of my question, will y'all be soliciting sponsors? Because I mean, we got retired NFL football players, baseball players.
I even talked to them.
That's what I'm saying, I could make, I could make that happen with some of them. Most of them I know personally. And Ricky, we can't let the school board off the hook either, right?
They want to say that, but.
That's why I help you out.
That's what he's helping out.
Maybe in the future, we can't let the school board off the hook either, right? Because we're gonna be, in essence, educating their kids.
Yes.
On another level, we're gonna be educating.
This is good.
I mean, we're kinda calling them out right now, right?
It's a good thing.
It's gonna get back to them and they'll start considering.
They step up, they should.
Right, right.
It's a good thing.
That's what we do, they call us out and we call them out for the children. And so also, is there, and I thought about this as, is there George Rodriguez, does he have a foundation? Do they have a foundation? Okay.
They do.
Because I mean, you know, we got a world-renowned.
We have to, I did not approach that foundation because we were working with the New Orleans Jazz. And one thing, if you know me, I don't ask for more money than we need.
I can tell how you.
I do know that.
I was assuming we were going to get the amount of money that we had put in the proposal. And it's just that this year was unusual. According to the people I've talked to with the New Orleans Jazz Foundation, they had to cut some of the awards. I don't know if, I don't think it's too late to approach.
Anybody.
Yeah.
Right.
But then if we approach them, then we're looking at increasing the number of children. And that depends on the resources, the capacity that Parks and Recreation can handle. We're gonna have to add more teachers because I didn't want 20, 30 kids to one art teacher. I wanted this to be a very personal experience for each child. So something maybe we can all, we can, we can work on looking at.
Yeah, absolutely. So you're kinda like, let's start with what we have and hopefully it'll snowball into something great and I believe it will.
Yep.
Well, I'll contact you about those.
Yes, ma'am. I also have an artist friend that's in, that worked here, Freddie knows him, Brandon, Brandon Thomas.
Definitely.
He's in Los Angeles now, so. I heard he's doing pretty good, we're gonna track on him too.
Resources and support that we can get, working with the city. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Thank you for your attention, Ms. Phoebe.
Then I'll take my housekeeping part of this. Okay, we have 5,000 in the resolution. So if we're gonna consider the 7,500, then we can either vote in the 5, if that's what we're doing. But if we want to go to the 7,500, totally up to this council, then remember we'll have to, I'll have to have an amended motion to amend this before we vote on it, so.
May I also amend the motion that we add the 2,500 to the 5,000 that we proposed?
Okay.
If I can get a second.
All right, is there a second? Okay, so I have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Ledbetter, a second by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed, and I heard yours too. Is there any discussion on moving this up to 7,500 total?
I just, I don't know if we're almost being greedy by taking credit for sponsoring the whole thing. Do we give the parish and school board an opportunity to put money forth? I just don't know what, where their thought process would be on the whole thing. I mean, I think we could put it all up, but what if they want to as well? I mean, could you use more than 7,500?
Or, 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 yeah, we can use the 10,000.
Okay, okay, gotcha.
But. But I would, I don't know how it works with this process. But if the parish said, yes, we would like to participate in this, then take out whatever that money is that they would be willing to contribute, take it, take, take city money out of it.
Boy, that's a rarity. That is so.
We're still not going above the 10,000.
But that could be done, like we could sit here and say we're willing to put.
We could approve the 7,500 and then if they would put up some money and we want to reduce it, I think we can do that. Can we do that, Jeff? Or we gotta come back and do a budget amendment? It's probably the right thing to do. We probably have to come back and do a budget amendment.
I think if you give the money, you don't take it back.
Right.
Okay, okay.
But, but if we don't spend all.
But she doesn't want to keep it.
But this, you might be able to.
Oh, we can call them out for next year. That's another thing we can do.
And that way, you know, you can hire another teacher, add more kids to the program based on whatever monies you get from the parish and the school board. So we wouldn't have to give it back.
Yeah, we have two choices. We can do more kids or we can just do what we're doing this year and we have already called out every other agency and we will continue to do that for next year. So that's, that's kind of the choice, but you have the floor.
Yeah, that sounds good. Okay, I was just curious.
Oh, no, that's a good point.
In case anybody else wanted to put forth money.
Okay, okay.
So are we at 7,500?
I was getting ready to ask that, right now.
Up to 7,500.
Up to 7,500, I would say up to.
That's, yeah, that's the choice. Y'all want to do up to 7,500?
Think up to, up to 7,500.
Okay. So do you have to amend the motion again or are we good with up to?
I think our motion's 7,500, I mean.
I know.
Well.
And, and I hate to give, I hate to give Phoebe so many good suggestions. You're gonna bury the poor woman.
Yeah, yeah.
And, you know, and help. So maybe, maybe what we can do is put the 7,500 up. And then next year, there'll be more opportunities.
That's what I think.
To do a bigger program with sponsors, bring the other public bodies in. But, but I don't want to make it unworkable at this point for her.
Right, I want her to be able to move, you know.
So this year's a model year, right?
Okay, okay. Good, so what we have on the floor is 7,500. If everybody's, any other comments?
She kinda answered my other question was, is this gonna work in perpetuity? If you're trying to do this long, you want this to be expanded for.
You all would decide that if you see that this has been successful.
So you want to come to us every year and.
No, what we would do is you decide as the council and the mayor if this has been a success. And if it's a success, then of course we'll do it again.
Okay.
But like, like someone said, we'll do it bigger and better involving more, more actors.
So it's a model, as you said?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion?
It'll be easier because all we do is.
No other discussion? Then I would ask you to please vote your machines.
We voted over the 7,500.
Oh, wait a minute, you know what? I got a housekeep something. All we did right now was vote to amend. Now we have the motion on the floor, just to tell you, now we have to go again.
Right.
No, now we have a.
Original motion.
Now I need a motion on what we just voted on, on the amended motion, to give her $7,500.
Ms. Ledbetter made that motion on the.
No, she made the motion to amend.
Amended.
So now we gotta do a motion to vote on this. So I would need a.
No, you already had the motion because this was an amended motion. The motion was to do what we.
But we only voted on the amended motion.
Right, so we just need to vote again.
Yes, ma'am, yeah. That's what I'm saying, I need somebody, I need a second, I need a first and a second to vote again.
No, you already had it at the beginning.
No, I had it to amend.
No, you had it when we went to discussion and then I amended. We wouldn't have been discussing if we hadn't had a motion.
So we had a 5,000 motion.
Right.
Yeah.
That opened the floor.
A motion to amend that motion to 7,500.
Yeah.
But we haven't voted on the 7,500.
I know, now we have to vote, that's what I'm saying. Now we have to vote again.
We just have to vote.
No, you need a first and a second, that's all.
But I never vote without a first and a second.
No, I understand.
Yeah, so I need a first and.
I'll make a motion to vote on the 7,500 allocated towards.
And I second it.
Okay.
We're done.
All right, well then I have a motion on the floor by the Mayor Pro Tim and a second by Councilwoman DeeDee Reed. And I would ask you to please vote your machines one more time. And now, we're all done. Thank y'all very much. Trying to do it right.
Well, that's right.
Yeah. This is awesome.
All right. Yes, what a good thing. Item 5D.
Resolution 22-05 requesting that DOTD salvage all ornamental light poles along Hopkins Street that are removed as part of their drainage improvements project.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Deedee Reed, and a second by Councilwoman Marla Lewis. Do we have some discussion on this item? And I'm sure we will.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Whoa, who had the floor first? Somebody? I don't know, I'll call on you, Marla, first, and then I'll.
I'll yell at Deedee, because she, she has most of hers.
Okay, well, all right.
She may say what I'll.
Councilwoman Deedee Reed.
So, um, based on our conversation, it sounds like DOTD is saying that we have to remove the lights to fix the drainage problem, which is a big problem. And then there's going to be an overlay of the street. But we're not throwing away the poles. We're gonna take them and put them in Weston Park, and we're gonna light up the path, which will be beautiful at night. And so, hopefully provide some more safety for people. The issue of, are we gonna have more poles? We're not planning to replace them with other poles. We're just gonna have the lighted poles that we have today, correct?
Well, we have both streetlights and the decorative lights. As a private citizen, a whole bunch of years ago, I wrote the original grant as a private citizen that put those poles in place a long, long time ago and did the streetscape. So, I know the history of it, because I went to DOT to do it. Well, DOTD sent me a letter and said, yeah, we gave you a grant for it, but it's our poles, and we are going to remove them. I asked, I didn't want them to remove. You know, I liked them. They said, no, you know, in the road swap program from previous, uh, administration, we are coming to pull those up, do a huge drainage project, which will get pipes to the bayou, which is greatly going to help the drainage in the West End, but we don't plan on putting them back. So, then that's when I started thinking about it. Well, then I want the poles. So, we wrote a letter and said, we want the poles, because we will use them in the West End Park and without, to enhance a walking trail. So, that's kind of where we are. But they don't plan on putting them back. But I am not positive, and we'll have to take that up. The street lighting from 20 years ago, when was all we had, has been greatly enhanced by those new poles. So, I am concerned, and we'll talk to CLECO, and I've already started that, that we're gonna have to figure, we don't add streetlights, that's something that we don't do. But in this case, I don't know that we're gonna have enough lights on Hopkins Street. So, now I'm going back to DOTD and saying, okay, you took my poles away. Yes, I want them, but at the same time, can you help me pay for some more lights? Because I do think we are gonna need, we'll be back to like we were 20 years ago, and it was pretty dark is why, the reason we added those in the first place.
Right.
So, I'm trying to make the best lemonade I can make out of lemons. I can't stop DOTD from coming and get them. They outgun us. Uh, so I'm asking for them, and then I am asking them for some additional help to see if we can get them to help us improve the lighting once these go away. But that's where we are, and we are kind of hamstrung with this. I put it on the council, because I certainly want our community to know that we're not trying to take those light poles away. I wish they could stay. But I'm, I'm outgunned. So, that's where, that's kind of where we are on it.
All right, so, our takeaway from this is that we just need to figure out with CLECO whether or not we can add more lighting so that we can keep the street lit.
But since DOTD's taking these away, I don't want to let them off the hook. I would like to see the state possibly pay for some of that. Because CLECO's not gonna want to pay for it either. And we spend over $600,000 a year on streetlight, just this, just the utility bill alone. So, I would like to, to hopefully get some, something else out of DOTD if possible.
Okay, all right.
So, I'm trying, you know?
Yeah.
Or we're trying. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Yeah, so, so my takeaway from it is, uh, and, and Mr. Mike is right, uh, those lights, and you're right too, those lights added a lot of, a lot more lighting in, in that community. But I promise you, I've heard more about those roads. When are they gonna get paved? And then the drainage as well. So, my, my takeaway is to, to, to my constituents, when you see those light poles coming up.
Something's happening.
Your road is coming soon.
Yeah, or your drainage is coming, then your.
And I believe we'll, as you said, I believe we'll have to be thinking, being proactive, and thinking about future lighting options, uh, for, for our community. Like, like, like the old folks say, we have to cross that bridge when we get there, but we definitely gonna have to cross it, because it, it, it's much brighter with those lights. I'm gonna ride down there tonight and kind of, I never thought about it, Mr. Mike. I never thought about how bright it made it, but tonight, I'm gonna ride tonight and see, you know, how much lighting that is actually showing when I, when I leave from here.
Well, you know what, Councilman Lewis? When you ride down there, there's a couple of lights that are out, and you'll see the difference in the places where the lights are out. It's a lot darker than where the lights are actually shining. Because I ride down there sometimes at night, and I can always tell I'm in the area where one of those lights are out. Because we've been waiting for CLECO to come and change the bulbs, switch them out. So, when you ride down there, you'll see. So, we do need to do something to keep it lit, so that we can maybe make sure people feel safe walking around at night. So, it's definitely one of those things we're gonna have to address pretty soon.
Almost immediately, almost immediately. And the enhancement part two is kind of gonna be a problem for some people, because it's, they were, they're pretty. And, you know, so.
Yeah, the loss of that, you know, that kind of stylish light, it's gonna be.
Well, that's why I don't want to lose them completely, and I want to get them to the park where our community can still enjoy those lights.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, they'll like that, that they're in Weston.
We'll never hear, what, what happened to those lights on Hopkins Street?
Right, at least we can say they're in the park, and through the ARPA money where we put in a walking trail, we're gonna use them there. Anybody, any other discussion on this item? And then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. Madam Clerk, 5E.
Resolution 22-06, rescheduling New Iberia City Council meeting presently set for March 1st, 2022, Mardi Gras Day to March 2nd, 2022.
Do I have a motion?
Moved.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim, and a second, who's the second? Councilman Bruce Art, thank you. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? Please vote your machines. Thank you. I skipped a meeting one year, and we felt like we never caught up. So, that's why I didn't want to do that. We just moved it to the next day. Thank you. Uh, 5F.
Resolution 22-07, approving change order number two between the City of New Iberia, Menville Lumber Company, and Paul Allen for the Visitor Pavilion Conversion Project, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Dustin Swer, do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, Councilwoman Deedee Johnson-Reed. Do I have any discussion on this item? Yes, Councilwoman Reed? One of those change orders, I, I know it's coming. It is a good thing. I'm just putting you on the spot. I don't know if you really have a, do you have a comment?
I'm gonna wait to.
Okay.
Are you gonna talk about it?
Yeah, why don't we let David talk about it?
I'm sorry, Justin.
Question, sorry, you don't want me to talk?
No, why don't you talk?
All right. So, this change order is actually one that was initiated by the mayor and our firm.
Yeah.
After we looked, not by the contractor.
I was waiting to tell her that, but it's okay.
Yeah. So, we had a lot of leftover brick that we salvaged on the project. And as we were looking around the plaza, not the pavilion, we noticed there were a lot of unsafe conditions with the brick as far as at the steps, on handrail situations, whether it's missing or completely loose, if someone will step, and it's just a liability happening. So, while we had a mason on site, we took the opportunity to mark any bricks that were a tripping hazard or just unsafe conditions, and they would be able to go and basically use those leftover bricks. And it's just the labor to go and reinstall in these conditions. So, it's a value of about $2,000 to do that.
Okay.
It was proactive instead of reactive.
Yeah, and, and big liability. And if you notice in the project, we also added more handrails that kind of, I snuck that in with the visitor's center bid. We put more handrails, because we have all of our veterans, all of our vents are there. And in some of those, one set of stairs had no handrails, and the other set that were very wide apart. So, we also picked up some additional handrails kind of during the project. I also, full disclosure, am using the same people and getting the price to come and do that here at our plaza here, because we have a ton of broken bricks and tons of areas that it's the same liability. I mean, I need to continue. One of the reasons our insurance, of course, it went up, but one of the reasons it didn't go up as much is because of all of, of the areas of new roofs and new electrical panels and all the things that y'all have helped me be proactive about. So, that was just, when I was out there and saw that, I was like, we gotta take care of this.
Okay.
Yes, sir?
I have one question. So, being with this change order, are we still at or below budget with the project?
Yes. Okay. We're still over 20,000. Like, under budget.
Under budget.
Yeah.
Which, which will be the money we utilize very shortly to do the displays on the inside, because we really didn't budget a lot of money for that. And we talked about, if we could keep a handle on our change orders, we would have some additional money to go inside, because how do you have a visitor's center with no visitor information? But that's another reason that you stay on these, these contractors and try to minimize your change orders. Anybody else? Okay, uh, let's see, Brooke stepped out. Am I gonna need to wait?
She just stepped out.
Well, I, I guess we can.
We can still vote.
Yeah, then I'll ask you to vote your machines.
He disagrees with the.
Thank you, very much. Madam Clerk, 5G.
Resolution 22-08, approving change order number five between the City of New Iberia, Menville Lumber Company, and Paul Allen for the Bayutech Museum Phase II renovations, Doc Vorey Swing, and George Rodriguez Park, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Swer, and a second by Councilwoman Deedee Johnson-Reed. David, you want to tell us about this one?
Yeah, so this is actually a accumulation of different items that were presented to us over the last several months. Some of which are credits, some of which are increases, and it actually totals to a $492 credit on the project. I could go through each one of the items if y'all want. The first one was in relation to some fire marshal requirements for additional jipboard layers on a stair, which we needed to do. We got a credit from the metal building manufacturer for a reduction in, uh, well, really, their misunderstanding of our intent. So, cleared that up, and they gave us a credit. We had a loading dock reconfiguration that was a credit, it was a reduction of concrete work. We switched from steel to wood joists for the floor system. Uh, as a necessity, because of the availability of steel joists right now, there was basically almost a 12-month lead time on it. So, our other option was to use wood. Uh, it was an $89 increase on that. We did find some old concrete foundations about 18 inches below the back of the site that must be removed to, in, basically in order to install our new foundation. So, there was some concrete work that had to be done to demo that. And then, as we removed one of the small outbuildings behind the museum, we found an old doorway that was in the brick. There was no door, just an opening. We had to infill that. It was all unforeseen. And then, we also removed the elevator pit that was supposed to go in this phase, and it's gonna go in the next phase. So, we got that scope of work out. So, this is actually a credit for the project.
Any questions or discussion on this credit change order? That's another rarity. None, seeing here none? Then I would ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. Try to make that continue, please? No?
Please.
Yeah. Next item, 5I.
Resolution 22-09, approving change order number six between the City of New Iberia, Menville Lumber Company, and Paul Allen for the Bayutech Museum Phase II renovations, Doc Vorey Swing, and George Rodriguez Park project, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by, uh, Councilwoman Brooke Markout, and a second by Councilman Dustin Swer. Is there any discussion on this item? Well, David, you want to tell us about this one?
Yeah, so this item actually falls under the other professional, the landscape architect. However, he has COVID, so he is not able to explain this today. So, I will do my best to decipher what he has told me about it. But essentially, there were some lights that were installed right in front of the George Rodriguez sculpture that were installed last phase. And, um, as a result to a lot of the moisture content and some issues with the light itself, they are failed. They're no longer working. And cannot be repaired, essentially, because of the housing and, and the different electrical components in it. And so, the organization, the committee with the George Rodriguez Park has asked that they remove those lights and just concrete it over. And there are no lights. There's enough illumination around to light up the sign, and there are lights still on the sculpture. Those small spots are gonna be removed, so.
Questions, comment? And, and we did try to go back to the manufacturer to, but.
Yeah, there was a lot of.
Lot of back and forth, trying to get them to give us something for their failed lights, but it didn't, it didn't work.
How long have they been installed?
Uh, probably, I guess, a year and a half, two years, yeah.
Yeah, almost, almost two.
So, probably out of warranty?
Yeah. So, they basically said they're out of warranty. They basically said they don't work for that application.
And they don't make them anymore.
And they don't make them anymore, even though that's what they marketed them for, that application. So, it's why they don't make them.
Right.
But it, it has been frustrating.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? And I would ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. Okay, next item, 5I.
Resolution 22-10, awarding contract to Menville Lumber for the Little Brooklyn Pavilion Project, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Do I have a motion?
Move.
Motion by Councilman Dustin Swer, and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsal. Is there any discussion on this item? Yes, sir?
I do, I see all my Little Brooklyn peeps, peeps stepped out, but, um.
Still one person in here.
Oh.
Yep.
Well, thank you.
Thanks for hanging.
But I do, I, I, you know, I do have a comment to make, and I'm, I'm happy this is happening. I, I can't take credit for something like this, but I will say the council can. I mean, we all standing behind each other 100% of all the projects that we all want to do in our districts. And this is one that's been, they've been begging for it for a long time, and I'm glad it's come to fruition. And Mayor, I want to thank you for actually organizing and coordinating everything with all our council members about, you know, where we can see things going and what things can be improved. And this is definitely one, and I'm just happy it's happening. So, once again, thank, thank you all. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other comments? And I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much. 5J.
Resolution 22-11, awarding contract to Menville Construction for the MLK Center and Weston Park Improvements Project, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Lewis, and a second by Councilwoman Markout. Is there any discussion on this item? No discussion? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. This, this is another important project, another really good project, another one of the $100,000 projects. Marla didn't want to say anything, but I will. He's worked very hard on this and has a good vision for these improvements. And it's like all the other $100,000 projects, we a team, and we all in this together. But it, uh, good stuff coming. Thank y'all very much. Okay, 5K.
Resolution 22-12, authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement between the City of New Iberia and Architect Paul Allen for the professional services on the Weston Park Splash Pad Phase II project.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Marla Lewis, do I have a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Deedee Johnson-Reed. Is there any discussion on this item? This is a great one. This is the first of the ARPA money that we are spending. We can spend this now because of the help of running the calculation of money that came off as a loss. We could utilize it to do this project and to do the, uh, which we're about to do, order the new fire truck. But there were a couple of projects that we could cut out of the herd of the money. And this was the one that I wanted to see go straight out the block, because I feel like it's unfinished business. I think that we did a small splash pad, and it was good, and we promised more, and this is gonna deliver more. So, this is really important. Uh, I think it sends a message of this council and my administration's priorities to get to all the parks, to get to all the neighborhoods, and to touch as many people as we can. So, I'm, I'm very excited about it. What this will do is add some small additions and some big features.[1547.78] I want the kids to see the splash pad. I want them to have things to play under. So I think this is going to be a really fun project. I've already kind of started working with David. We will get back to you. He will do some design work, and we will get back to you to get it approved, because this is, I think, a really cool project. Mr. Bruce Art.
Long time of coming. Mr. Mayor, I think you changed up on the splash pad to make it even better.
Make it big.
But in a big way, sir. You got it coming for the people, and we all got it coming over there. Marlo, you watching, we watching your vision, and keep it up in the West End.
Appreciate it.
Well, I'll comment. You know, the mayor's doing a good, and this is going to come up again another time. But, you know, people were saying that we have just a block of cement, and, you know...
I know.
And I thought, you start off somewhere. Everything we're doing, you start off somewhere. And you build on it, and that's what we're doing. We build on it. So when you're coming across the tracks, you're going to see, you're going to see something that's going to excite you and your kids, you know, so.
Thank you. Any more? Yes, ma'am?
So is there any way?
Mr. Bruce Art, okay, thank you. Just making sure. Who got the floor? Councilwoman Dee Johnson Reed.
Any chance we can put up, like, the design so people kind of know what's coming?
I do want to do that. That's why, because a lot of times we don't bring the design back. We just start proceeding.
Right.
But that's something, that's why I said earlier, I would like him to bring the design back. We can pop it on the screen, and it's something that I'm very excited about, and I think our kids will be too. So as soon as we have a concept, I want to bring it back to a council meeting and pop it on that screen.
Yeah, and I would say let's do it in the council meeting, but can we also put something near the splash pad so people could see what's coming?
I don't see why not. We can put it in the community center, you know? We can hang it in the community center.
Yeah, just so that people, I mean, I think it's, we got to tell our story. We got to market the things we're doing. I think that would be great for them to see what's coming.
Okay.
Okay.
I like that.
How about on our webpage?
Yes, sir.
Can we share on our webpage as well?
We sure can. We sure can.
That would be great.
And I really think with all the ARPA projects, we should, because it's hitting the communities, it's doing the thing. Same thing with the $100,000 project. We probably really should, so I'm going to ask you to help me with that. Of the projects we have going, you know, we do have graphics, we do have plans. I really think that we hitting on something to get it in the community. Maybe when we do a community park project in the future, or even the ones, let's catch up. We go and hang something in the parks, and let's, you know, feed our website. That's something that we don't do enough of, is tell our story.
Yeah, I was going to tell Heather I'm mad at her for not telling me.
Yeah, well, you see, that's something we should get out there, so give me a graphic on that. I'll get on the website.
Yeah, I actually took a picture of the one in First Street. I was going to post it. I was like, Heather didn't tell me what's up. I just happened to pass by there.
Cool. Good, yeah, no, we're catching up with that one.
And thank you guys for the one in First Street. It looks beautiful. Yeah.
Did we vote on the splash pad yet?
No, we haven't.
Okay, any other discussion on the, I'm just making sure, man. I'm the housekeeper tonight. Any other discussion on the West End Splash Pad? Done? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. Look, how many times do I got to keep me straight? So, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Resolution 22-13, regarding the City of New Iberia providing health insurance coverage for retirees.
Do you have a motion?
Motion to table.
We have a motion to table.
I second that.
We have a second on a motion to table. Okay, we have a motion to table by Councilwoman, uh, Ledbetter, and a second by Councilman Lewis. There's no discussion on a motion to table. So what I need you to do is vote your machines if you want to table it or not. Okay, the motion to table fails.
Fails.
It failed?
Oh, wait.
No, we got it. It's four.
Or three.
Ah, okay, well.
So we just failed a motion to table?
So we just...
So it's laid on the table?
It's laid on the table. No discussion, no nothing. All these professionals that came tonight, no nothing. Still hanging on our heads. All right.
No blitz.
Yeah. Going to hold up a lot of stuff. All right, moving on. Madam Clerk?
One second, sir.
Yes, ma'am. Give you all the time you need.
Introduction of ordinance number 2022-02, amending contract for professional services with Fair Art Habits and Associates for City of New Iberia's street project and to set for public hearing on February 1st, 2022.
I got a motion? Motion by Madam Mayor Pro Tim. Second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Dee Reed, any discussion on this item?
So I read through this, and I'm not 100% sure, other than I saw whether there's some labor costs. What's driving it up? I think another $2 million?
We originally set down with a budget of $8 million because we weren't sure what it was going to cost.
Okay.
We are increasing our budget to the 11.5 and holding a million. We're holding a million because we don't know where the bids are going to come from. And we borrowed more because originally, when I started talking to them about it, we weren't even positive how much we were borrowing.
Okay.
So the fact that we borrowed 12.5, I got to let them catch up because they work on a percentage basis.
Okay.
So they are catching up, but the total instructions they have is to bid the job based on a budget of 11.5, not 12.5, because I want to hold that last million just in case our bids come in higher.
Okay.
But that's kind of where we are, so, you know, all of our professionals work on a percentage basis. So we are catching them up to the percentage on the basis of what we're spending.
Okay. All right, I just wanted to have a clear understanding, because, I mean, $2 million is a lot of money.
Oh, yes, ma'am. It is. It is. Any other discussion? Then I ask you to vote your machines. Yes, ma'am.
Property standards, revisit the state of buildings located at 515 Daig Street in District 2 in action, resolution 22-14.
Jimmy?
Okay, he's removed a lot of the old siding, and he's got a dumpster on site. So my suggestion is to revisit on March the 2nd.
And this is a gentleman that actually was going offshore, right?
Right.
Okay, want to make sure.
March 2nd revisit, that's your recommendation? Okay.
Yeah, well, you need a motion, right? Yeah, I'll make a motion to revisit it March 2nd. He's making a motion to revisit it.
Motion by Councilman Lewis to revisit, and a second by the Mayor Pro Tim. Is there any other discussion? And I'd ask you to vote your machines. 7B.
Revisit the state of buildings located at 103 Doris Street in District 3 in action, resolution 22-15.
Right, this is going to be a revisit for March 2nd also.
Yes, sir, Mr. Bruce Art.
Why we got to revisit on this one? We got an infusion or whatever you want to call it from a lawyer, or what? He hadn't done a thing.
Infusion.
Now, it is enough. Any kind of way we can push it up till right now? You know, it's been five times this up here. We getting, the neighbors are getting, I mean, they talking to me regularly. I got some retired, some retired people that served in the military. They don't want to, they don't want to live by this thing anymore. So I want to know how we got, I thought today was the day. Darn it. Why we got to keep looking at this?
You're looking at me, but this is not the property that we have the lawsuit about.
Is any of mine that he has, or the same person has a lawsuit against one of these properties?
This is, this is his wife. This is Mrs....
No, no.
That's him right there.
This is his.
That's him.
Oh, no, no.
I can't get over, I don't know, I didn't hear about revisit. I've been waiting two months for him to do one nail, one board, one anything. We getting tired of looking at this thing. You know, how did we get to revisit? Our people been a little bit patient.
Well...
You know, over there.
I apologize if there's a miscommunication, but this was, this was pointed out to me when the guy was in the hospital and had the bypass surgery, and I think we should, I think we should extend it. He did buy a permit on December the 7th.
Why he hadn't done a thing at all? He has a whole bunch of people supposedly working for him, but he done one board.
I think we need to, I think we need to put this one off.
Legally, I'll go with you, but that's it.
Thank you.
What is it, March? I'll be back. I'll be missing the first meeting in February.
Yes, sir, I got it down.
So put that down in case you need...
Yes, sir. Yeah, you sure can.
I'll be back for that, for sure.
Thank you.
And I don't know why we didn't hear about that before the meeting. But pushing this further, I would rather go with the hammer to the ground, period. He's using too many excuses, and I'm talking for the people that I represent. And it's along the main thoroughfare through town that people have to look at this thing on Bank Street. So I said my piece, but I hope it never creeps up again where we're not ready to vote on something the night we thought we go vote.
Okay.
It's on the corner of the Bank and Doris?
Doris, yeah, Big Osswell.
I have a question about that.
Yes, ma'am. Ricky had asked me to go next, and then I'll...
Jimmy, just on the permit that he purchased, obviously he met all the criteria that you expect out of him.
To fix the outside.
Fix the outside. And he doesn't have to bring, he did appraisal, he don't have to bring up the code or...
Yeah, he's got to bring everything up to code.
So he brought your appraisal?
No, he didn't bring the appraisal.
I thought that's what we acquired. I mean, the cost of, the cost of repairs, I mean.
Yeah, the cost of the permit. I want to say...
Had all that in there.
He bought the perm, whoa, that's the wrong one.
If he doesn't have the appraisal, he doesn't...
No permit. We didn't buy a permit on that.
Okay, well, then we...
He should go back and get it all.
Hang on, hang on, look, look, hang on. Why do you have professionals? Because you listen?
No.
Like to let them talk, but you listen to them.
I'm done, Ricky. I just want to be buried. Okay.
One more time, Mr., should we go for the tearing it down, or should we, your opinion?
My opinion, we need to bump it, because the guy's been in the hospital.
If anything would happen to him, who would be next in charge to take up his luck?
That would be his estate. Now, I don't know who that is. Yeah, I wouldn't count on that. Thank you.
I'll go with moving it, but I'll go with, we should be contacted before the meeting of some change like this.
I understand.
Because all the neighbors were waiting tonight for it to be gone.
Okay, Councilman Ledbetter?
If I can recall correctly, he was supposed to secure the building, and there's nothing done to secure the building at all. I mean, there's no boards up or anything like that. He was supposed to secure it and then get the, you know, start fixing it up, get the permit and all to do that. But he was supposed to secure it first, but that didn't happen.
Three months he's been coming in here. Three months buying for time, and he hadn't put one nail in in three months in that house.
It is?
It's a long time.
I think due to his medical situation, we need to give him more time.
Okay.
Not because he's done what he's supposed to do, not because he's a friend of mine.
Yeah, I know.
Not because we're not fussing with him right now in court.
You're trying to cover us, and I appreciate that.
Well...
But we're going to go by what you say.
Yeah.
And I'll try to tell the neighbors to put up with it for another two or three weeks, a month or two.
All right.
I'll make sure I'll be here.
Is there any further discussion than, yeah, we never got a...
Second motion.
Yeah, we don't have the motion yet. No, we need to make a motion to move it. So, Mr. Bruce Art, if you want to make the motion to move it to March...
Again.
What'll be the date?
March 2nd.
March 2nd, so I got a motion on the floor to move it to March 2nd, regretfully. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilwoman Dee Reed, so is there any other discussion? Then please vote your machines.
You can hear with a sling them on.
And I will, I will communicate better about the situation next time, I promise you.
Thank you, buddy.
He did.
Think you'll get the message through TV.
All right, 7C.
Revisit the state of buildings located at 811 Edna Street, District 5 in action, resolution 22-16.
Jimmy?
Yeah, she purchased the permit on 12/7. They started removing the siding off, so they've started.
Okay.
Then I make a motion to revisit March 2nd?
March 2nd.
I second.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so I have a motion on the floor to visit on March 2nd. You got a comment?
Well, no, I just want that, they're tearing it down themselves, or they're remodeling?
No, they remodeled. They bought a remodel permit.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so I have a motion to revisit. Do I have a second?
I did.
Oh, you did? Oh, I'm sorry. Councilman Ledbetter, seconds. Is there any other discussion?
Yeah.
I just want to make sure. Anybody else have any other discussion? Nope, then please vote your machines. Thank you. 7D.
Revisit the state of buildings located at 318 Week Street, District 5 in action, resolution 22-17.
Jimmy?
Okay, she bought a permit on 12/9, the 3200. She's here.
All right. Please identify yourself and tell us what you're doing with the property.
Well, it seems obvious that they've actually done some work on it. So I'm going to make a motion to revisit March 2nd, or do we need to revisit?
Yeah, I think so, because you're not finished.
All right, so I make a motion to revisit on March 2nd.
All right, I have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Dee Reed to revisit, and I hear Councilman Ledbetter to second it. Do we have any other discussion? Seeing none, please vote your machines.
She's working on it.
Thank you.
Ricky, you don't vote?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, 8A.
Update on American Rescue Plan Act funding by Mayor Decourt.
If you give me a minute, I got to find my paperwork. Yeah, I know, I picked it up. I got the American Rescue. Yeah, I know. Ricky, didn't pick my paperwork up?
Wait, wait, wait.
I think you stole my paperwork. Thank you, no wonder I can't find my paperwork.
I did steal it, I confess.
Okay. First thing I want to tell you about the American Rescue is you know about the interim rule and that we use the formula for loss calculation. We'll be able to do that again. And you know that we're buying the fire truck, and we're paying for the splash pad out of that money. And that's why we were able to vote on the splash pad tonight, and that's why Gordon is in the process of negotiating to order our ladder truck. Now, when you look at this, we have a new ruling that's going into effect that's going to help us, because up to $10 million, they have loosened up the rule some. So because of that, we still going to do all the reporting, we're still going to do everything. We run the projects in the new way that we've set up, all of our projects in-house through the administration. We have a team now where Erin and Finance and Jane, and we're all working together. They've all got assistants. Our Jane's is coming, and we're working as a team to kind of handle these projects. And it spilled over to what's helping us handle the rest of our projects in a new way that we really are keeping track, which it tracks train yarders, it tracks finance, it tracks when we need budget amendments. It's a really good system that we've set up. But, so I'm taking advantage of that. We, in April, we will get the information we need to move with the rest of the projects, but that won't be coming until April. And once we have that, which is some census information, we will be able to launch more of these projects. And it does look like with the new rule, then when we get our next allocation of money, which will be sometimes in this year, May, June, let's say, we can launch all the rest of the projects. So it's letting us speed up in the way we're spending money, let us speed up on what we're doing in the communities. So I wanted to let you know that, and I will have more as soon as I get the rest of that information. And we are working with our demographer, Cedric, Mr. Cedric, and he needs some of that same information. So he is in the process of obtaining it, and we will get it as soon as he has it. And on a side note, he'll be coming pretty soon. But I wanted to let you know that. We should hear in January. We think January 25th is the date. They will know if we're leveraging the $1 million to get $5 million for sewer. We should know that by the 25th. We are very hopeful that that happens. So I wanted to let you know about that, and that's really kind of what I can update you on ARPA. But I will start doing this every few months, and as things happen that we can spend more money, I'll release new projects. I'll be letting you know. Is there any questions?
Can I ask a question related to projects, not necessarily ARPA?
Sure.
So are we still going to try and give the public like a project update on some of the other ones that we're going to start?
Yes, and I'm working on that. That will be coming. I wanted to do ARPA first, and I wanted to do the streets this week, this meeting. And then I plan on at the next meeting to kind of start about some of the projects.
Okay, thank you.
Because I think it's important. We have a lot of projects going.
Yeah, and they're asking questions, and so it'd be great if we could just tell them.
Sure.
Thank you.
And if nothing further on that, we'll move to 8B.
Update on City of New Iberia Streets Project by Mayor Decourt.
Our streets projects, very exciting. I mean, this has been a long time coming. Our asphalt overlay, which is our largest job, it goes out for bid at the end of the month, and the work should begin in April, which is awesome. Then the concrete, it goes out to bid for June and July, and the work will begin in September. And then the sealant work will come... And then the sealant work will come later, and that will come around December or the beginning of 2023. And we won't wrap up this 12.5 million until sometime in 2023, and we're holding the last million dollars that we are waiting to make sure we're in budget. And then I have some concepts of what we might do with that money, but we can come back, uh, to talk about that. I have a new road program that I'd like to talk about, but I don't hold that because it's kind of some of the action that was taken tonight affects that. Uh, I had our professionals here to talk about it, to talk about bonds, to talk about what we might do, we had our auditor here, uh, and that didn't happen. So, uh, again, I got something hanging over my head that we, whether you table it or not, we need to settle it. It is affecting the future of our community, it is affecting the money that we have, we're not a bank, we're supposed to put that money back in services. You want to do for 300 or you want to do for 30,000? So I would like to have presented that tonight, but I can't because I don't know that it can happen. Um, done.
So quick question from a newbie. We tabled it tonight, but that doesn't mean that you can't reintroduce it.
I don't think you can talk about a tabled item tonight, you, once you tabled, you can't talk about it.
I'm just, I was just asking a procedure question, just because I don't know.
I guess I should, attorney can answer that.
Well, it would take a majority vote, according to the rules that the council adopted, it would take a majority vote of this group to take it off the table tonight.
So, but could it be reintroduced at another meeting?
Yeah.
Well, you'd have to put it on the agenda, it's like a regular agenda item.
Yeah.
I have a question.
I mean, the mayor sets the agenda, so that'd be up to him.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so I messed up with my vote whenever I voted to table it, I didn't realize that's what I was doing, I wasn't paying attention. And I don't know if there's a way to take it back, because I did want closure too for all these people that are just kind of waiting in limbo. You know, like they need to know, yes, are we gonna do this or no, we are not? I'm very sorry that I did that and caused all kinds of confusion, but.
I don't know that you can do that.
I don't know, I don't know if there's anything that can be done.
So, and I, I'll just tell you, I voted that way because I just, I saw something on here I didn't have a chance to look at. And I just wanted to be able to review the information that was presented, it was on the desk when I got here, I haven't enough time to look through it. Again, I understand how the whole insurance things work, but I just want to look at the numbers before, so I can tell people that I reviewed the numbers and here's why. So.
I thought there was people here to explain the numbers.
There, there were, the professionals that we hired, you know, we're here to do that.
No, I'm talking about the information that we got here, I didn't even have a chance to review, I wouldn't even be able to ask them a question because I didn't get a chance to review it, because it was sitting here.
Gotcha.
And that was, that was the main, that was the main reason why.
One at a time, Jeff.
Let me read the Rule 7, which is the.
Just, I, I have no clue about that.
The rules of procedure adopted December 18th, 2006. Motion to, Rule 7, motion to lay on the table and to take from the table. A motion to lay a question on the table is non-debatable and requires a majority vote.
Which we did.
A motion to lay on the table should apply only to that question. An amendment to the main question or other pending questions may be laid on the table, and either then the main question or other pending question shall be affected thereby. A motion to take from the table made at the same meeting that the matter was laid on the table shall require a majority vote of the members present. So it sounds like if you have a majority vote.
Hang on, hang on, I'm trying to understand.
Tonight. At the meeting, at the same meeting that the matter was laid on the table, if you have four votes to take it off the table tonight, you could take it off the table tonight and then consider it.
Are your people still here?
So, question, I want to.
Burton left, our auditor left, uh, our bonding attorney's still here. I had a letter to present from our insurance guy because poor guy found out this morning his wife had COVID, and then he called me and said, do you want me to come? I was like, no, please don't come, but he wrote a letter, uh, but our auditor is, is not here. I mean, the rest of the people are, but the auditor's not.
Can I say something now, since I made the motion?
Yes, ma'am.
The reason why I took it off for tonight was because, as she said, we got the information today. I had also some information that, you know, I think should be looked at also. The proposal, in fact, this thing, I didn't think we were gonna do it this year, so I didn't feel that we, we should actually be. Because when we went to the budget, we say we weren't gonna, we weren't gonna do it this year. And then all of a sudden, it came up on the agenda.
I put it on the agenda because it's gonna affect plans of what we could do to move this city forward, and it's gonna affect a 20-year road program that this city has never had. And it's gonna, could affect some future things for the Pepperflex. So I put it on because I feel that it's hanging over my head, and we've got plans to make and things to do for our citizens.
Can I understand about the roads, you know, those are, are really things that we use every day. But sometimes we need to think about our people infrastructure also, and we need to cherish them too. And they are as important as the roads that we travel on every day. And I think they should also be given consideration.
Are we going into weeds, Jeff, without doing this?
I think we are, I think.
I'm not being ugly, but I, I, I want to talk, but I think, I don't know if it's the right way.
This, this is.
Hang on, hang on, let's, let our attorney talk.
This is off the agenda right now.
Yeah.
It is.
If we have a motion to take it off the table, and we have a second on that motion, and we have a majority voting to take it off the table, then we can start talking about it again.
Okay.
Technically, we shouldn't have been talking about it at all.
Well, that's why the mayor interrupted.
Yes, ma'am, that's why I stopped, is because we were talking about it.
So if we have a motion.
But then you brought it back up.
If we have a motion to take it off the table, and we have a second, and we have a majority vote, then we take it up as an agenda item.
Okay, wait, hang on.
Can I make the motion to take it off the table, please? Or what you want, I mean?
I think it has to be the majority to make the motion correct.
No.
Can't be a dissenting vote, right? I'm asking.
That's not what it says.
Okay.
It says a majority.
Okay.
Normally, it would be somebody who just, who voted, like I would have to take it off the table since I voted for.
I need to make the motion?
Well.
To take it off the table?
That's usually the rule, but the rule this, the, the, that the council adopted was a majority, that's all it says. But Ms. Markot was in that majority that voted to table, so she could make the motion to take it off the table. And if we have four votes to take it off the table, then it's back on the agenda.
So now I make the motion, or are we still discussing, okay?
I just want to ask one question before you, so if she takes it off the table, then we can have a discussion. That doesn't mean that we're gonna vote on anything because we haven't reviewed the data.
That means we vote on something.
If we bring it back on the table, I mean, if we take it off the table, does that mean that we vote? We have to vote on the information in front of us?
You have to vote to take it off the table.
No, pass that.
Then we'll see whether or not there's a motion.
Okay, all right.
So you could vote on it or you could not.
Yeah, you could talk about it forever, or you could vote, or you could vote to say, yes, we're gonna do it, or no, we're not gonna do it, depends on what the motion is.
All right, I get it, I understand, thank you for the explanation.
This is a new territory for all of us.
It is.
Okay, now I can make the motion to take it off the table to talk about the retiree insurance? Yes, I made the motion to take it off the table.
Okay, I got a motion to take it off the table, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilwoman Markot and a second by the mayor pro temp. So now we vote to see if we're gonna discuss it, okay?
Clarify the vote for a yes.
Yes means we talk about it, no means we don't talk about it.
Okay.
Okay, then please vote your machines. Okay, now we talking about it, that's correct.
That's right.
Okay. Give me a second.
So, um.
Yes.
Since no one's started, I'll start.
Okay.
I actually would like to take a look at the numbers, because, and here's why I say that, I, I, I mentioned to you the other day that I'd like to see some projections. Because what we're talking about is any employee who retires but are not close to the age of 65, because somebody 65 and get Medicare. That's that time period in between, correct? I mean, that's, that's.
It could be that, but it doesn't have to be that.
Okay, but the vast majority of them, that's probably gonna be similar to the scenario.
Well, I don't know that, I mean, in other words, what I did was, and I have projections, and what I did, I have to look at the worst-case scenario. I have to look at, what is it called, this is unknown territory. So I have to look at if people retire and get on it, what, will our insurance go up immediately? And I'm not being ugly because of people's age, so I need to know the immediate impact, and I have numbers for that. And then I did, with help, I didn't do it, our finance person, our insurance company, came up with a projection of where those numbers would be in 10 years. Because if we float any more bonds, which we have to do, it's the lifeblood of us, we, we bonding out for 10 or 20 years. The road program, we'd bond off at 20, so it certainly would affect us, that's what brought this up for me to bring it up now, because we have to make some decisions along the next few months to continue the road program that we're just starting.
So.
So those projections, they're gonna look at the, we can call on them and ask them, but they're gonna look at the worst-case scenario.
Okay, so.
You can't have a program that's unknown, and you can't discriminate.
No, agree, but, I mean, I, I've seen situations where they say they will pay for the insurance up until that person qualifies for Medicare. And so that's 65, if I'm not mistaken, so, okay. I guess what I was thinking we would see tonight, and it might be in here, I just haven't had a chance to look at it, is what those projections look like. Because I understand the fact that if we do this, we're gonna, we could potentially not be able to provide some other service.
Correct.
So it's an opportunity cost associated with it.
Yeah.
But what we need to be able to do is to tell our constituents, here's how much this is gonna cost us in perpetuity, or, you know, an average of what it's gonna cost us versus, you know, hey, we're not gonna be able to provide this service if we do this. So I, I, me personally, I need to see the numbers so that it can make sense in my brain, so I can explain to other people if, if we all vote not to do this. So that's why I said table it, because we just got the information when we got in here, and it takes a minute to kind of look through it and interpret this so I can, I can ask the right questions when these guys are up here, because I don't want to vote on something that affects people's lives, and I haven't prepped for it. So that was my reason for moving in that direction. I mean, I understand both sides of this, so I, I just want to explain why I voted the way I did.
Yes, ma'am.
And I did also, um, I didn't understand about the insurance people being here or anything like that. Because, um, a couple of, three years ago, I did a, a proposal, and we talked about it, and I thought we were gonna actually talk about it again to see it, you know, similar to the parish, where they only, with the information I gave you, it's only like 24% that they pay when somebody retires. So the proposal that I put for, which of course you didn't have time to look at either, and the numbers, I think make, makes it more equitable and, uh, cheaper actually than, I don't know what they put on their paper. You know, I don't understand the projections and all that, that they were doing. I understood what I was doing and what I was proposing in order to, you know, to get the retirees a little bit of, uh, benefits when they retire. And I don't know, and I'm sure you didn't have time to look at what I proposed either, because it's there. And I'm sure most of you didn't have the opportunity to do it. So that's why I wanted to table it, so you could have the opportunity to look.
Yes, and listen, Sam here, I looked at Rick, I don't know if he caught me, and, and I told him, I've been thinking table all week, without talking to anybody. I've been thinking table and abstain all week, and really, my, my reason was, I just don't have enough information about insurance for our employees. I've always been self-employed, I've been self-employed for 30 years, still don't have in- insurance, just got some qualifying stuff Monday. And I'm like, I feel like a hypocrite making the decision about insurance for the long haul, for or against. And I've never had that, I've never been, worked under that umbrella, if you will, I'm a self-employed guy. Uh, I'm sure if I had employees or whatever, I would try to cut costs at any, at, you know, at any rate. In, in the barber business, we kind of like, do like contractors, you come in, you rent a booth from my shop, your insurance is on your own, your Medicare is on your own, your retirement is on your own. And that's the way it's been set up for years in the barber shop. Now, it's like barbers in the past have tried to pay you a check and take everything out and then pay your stuff, and people said, no, I need my money. And so that's how I've been operating for years, so when you ask me to, you know, make a decision, I mean, I was elected for the people by the people. I realize we have a lot of city employees, retirees, some that voted for me, some that don't live in my district. It's a hot button issue for me, and, you know, I, I, I pray, but I literally hadn't prayed about nothing, no decision, and I prayed about this decision. And I've been thinking table since I prayed, table, and I, so it wasn't like, it's because I didn't have enough information. I don't want to make a decision on something concerning something that I've never dealt with. I've never worked for a corporation, I've never worked for a public body, uh, other than being elected. I've never worked for somebody that paid my insurance, paid my benefits. I would love to, uh, but, you know, I should have went to the mil- military if I wanted, you know, insurance and medic, and, but, that's the past. So my thing was really, and I'll use the word naivety, and didn't want to be, at the end of the day, be making a decision on something that I, I just don't, I just don't know about. I know, I know what we're doing, but I don't know the long-term effects, good or bad, and I need to be, that need to be in front of me in layman terms. Because I definitely agree with the taking care of 30,000 people, uh, opposed to taking the 300, but then, you know, when 99, you don't leave the one, you go back and get the one, when 99 get away, you go back and get the one, so it's just, it's, it's, that's why I'm mad with it.
I like that. Uh, I'm gonna go around, let everybody have the floor first, then, then I'll come back. Dustin, you had your hand.
Uh, yeah, I mean, look, I voted the way I voted because I have a, you know, opinion, and that's my opinion right there, is a button, yes or no. Um, but at the same time. I've done research, I'm with Marlowe, I've been in the private business for a long time, I know what it takes to have to provide myself with insurance or my family with insurance. It's not cheap, one thing is not cheap, I wish it was, but it's not. Another thing, I've done research, I've looked back at Lafayette Parish, for example, I think last year, they, or it was two years ago, they voted and put a bill in place to where it can save millions to the community and also invest in the future employees that are coming in by not having to fork out all the money on retirees' insurance. So I did do some research on that as well. I mean, look, the way I see it, you come to work for a municipality, yes, you don't make big bucks, but you're provided damn good health insurance, great retirement, and for a long-lasting period of time, until you decide to retire or go on about your business. So, yeah, I do have mixed emotions when it comes to this subject, but at the same time, I want to look at, I want, I want to look for the future of what we can keep here and retain with the employees that we have here now, because what's gonna happen, they're gonna, if they're gonna start seeing an uptick in their insurance rates, guess what, they're gonna start looking somewhere else. They're gonna go to the next town and look for a job if they start seeing the spike, and that's what's gonna, to me, that's what, normally, that's what does happen. It's gonna go up, it, it never goes down. So, I mean, I have my opinions, I have my thoughts and everything, but I'm glad that we were able to take it and bring it back, just to discuss it, to where we can get each other's kind of point of view on things.
Absolutely.
And so I appreciate that happening, instead of just forgetting about it, because I did have people, I wanted to hear what others had to say as well, to get some kind of input from others. So I'm glad we're actually talking about it now, so I appreciate that, thank you.
I see firsthand, I've sold insurance for over 30 years, Dustin, you right on the money. Anytime something happens or changes in any company where you go, could be a group, if something changes a lot, it's gonna hurt the young fellows coming up. A lot of money they're gonna have to pay and bring back to their family, we gotta pay this extra. Well, we, we weren't sick, they didn't get hurt, they didn't have heart attacks, you know, but they're gonna have to pay because they absorbed the, the sick ones in the situation, so I see it firsthand, I wish it wasn't like that. But we have to look at the young employees too, that have to see how much they're gonna have to pay extra for this. You know, we have two, two things to watch out for, and yeah, I saw it firsthand, watch it go up and go up and go up. It gets bad, so I'm with you, Dustin, on that idea, that, yeah, the young ones in the organization will have to pay a lot more in certain situations.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so insurance is very expensive, and I'm assuming that the city stopped paying for the retirees' insurance because they. because they were in a bad financial position, right? And so I worry that if we take on this again, that it would put us in a bad financial position. Again, it would dig us in a hole where we're basically trying to claw our way out of the trenches just right now, and starting to be able to float these bonds to do good for our city. So if we take on all this extra cost, which is, I'm guessing, is gonna be a large amount. I thought someone was gonna be here to go over these numbers with us.
They were.
Um, so whenever I got on the city council, they quoted me at maybe $1,000 a month for me, by myself, being a 35-year-old with no pre-existing. That's a lot. So I can't imagine, if you're older and have health conditions, what it would be. But it's very expensive. Um, I just, I do like the way we're going. I wish health insurance was a little bit cheaper, that'd make this an easy decision. But it's so expensive, and it always goes up every year. That's it.
Okay.
Back to me.
Yes, ma'am. Well, I'm just trying to go around.
Um, insurance, I think, goes up. Not necessarily because you have older people or people are getting older. It depends on illnesses that you have within the group. Anybody can get a catastrophic, uh, illness. You know, somebody 20 can have a heart disease, you know, and those kinds of things. Around here, cancer is prevalent. You have young, old, all-in-between, getting diseases. And really, in an, in an organization like any organization where there's insurance, the more sick people you have, the higher the insurance is. It's not about age. Because you have some very, very healthy, older people. And if we were gonna do the retirees, we were gonna stop it at 65. Maybe if people knew that they could have a little benefit, and we're talking about only maybe 24% paying. Right now, we pay a lot more for those employees. Maybe they would retire before, you know, they get ageable. If they knew they could have some benefits. And, you know, somebody younger would take their place. We're not talking about insuring a whole bunch of elderly people for 20 or 30 years from now. We're talking about stopping it at 65. And that's the way especially the parish plan does. It stops at 65, and then that person is transitioned to a supplement if they want one in Medicare. So I'm saying, we don't even have a policy that we were looking at. We just have a bunch of numbers, the insurance person was saying it was gonna go up real high, I guess, on the paper. But not something that we would put in place and then look at the numbers. We didn't have a proposal. I know, I don't think we had a proposal as to what we gonna, we were gonna pay, how, what percentage, were we gonna do the same amount? We had none of that. So what did they build their numbers on? What did they use?
Okay, I'll, I'll present some stuff when everybody's finished. Did we go around to everybody first? Me, you, you want to speak?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, I mean, I'm just trying to do, that's the right thing to do?
Yeah, I think, I think if you, if you look at the dynamics of, of what we discussed tonight, nobody can deny that there's, there's no, there's no clear path on how to pay for this moving forward. There's no clear path. The costs are irrelevant, it goes up, there's no money set aside in our budget to pay for this service or this benefit currently. So i- if, if, all you guys understand what unfunded mandates are? The city's unfunded mandate's right around $9 million. I was on the parish finance committee and did the budgets. Part of the reason the parish is financially in trouble now is because their unfund mandates are triple hours, triple hours. So when we're talking about unfunded mandates, health insurance, retirees is unfunded mandate, you gotta find money to go pay for it. And if we gotta find money and go grab it from other areas, it's gonna jeopardize the growth of this community and, and what, what our vision is of trying to move. Yes, we respect our retirees, they did a good job, but at this point in time, it's, it's not a issue, it's not something we can fund. We'll not have a dedicated resource or a dedicated revenue source. And, and right now, at our $9 million unfunded mandate in our current audit, if we'd have did it, if this council would have did it in, back then, when they discussed in prior administrations, our unfund mandate would probably be in excess of 27 million, three times that, three times that. And, and we'd never, ever be able to go borrow money for the pepper plex, we'd never, ever go borrow money for roads. We wouldn't be able to do none of the things that you guys are experiencing now that are growing in your areas. We'd never be able to do the funding for Weston Park or City Park, whatever, because our unfund mandate would be so high. So, so when you make this decision tonight, it's not about providing something for your retirees. It's, what do you want? Do you want roads, community development, or do you want to fund retirement? I want to grow my community. I respect all my rights, but I want to grow my community. And that's why I want to put my initiative in my funds. But I think the mayor has a great job, uh, done a great job on his presentation, so I think y'all need to hear it.
Well, I didn't do it yet.
He does.
Well, anyway, Dustin, you had something?
Uh, the only question I had was, so if, can you tell me, I've been, I'm young, I'm on this, young on this council. We had a system in place years back, and that was taken away due to inflation and whatnots. So can you tell me how many years ago that was?
I have it, I don't have it in front of me, but it was probably, um, let's see, I was the pro temp.
Okay.
So subtract five, add five, yes, Jeff?
2007.
I was gonna get there, I thought it was eight.
Yeah, resolution was 2007-100. And I'll talk a little bit about that resolution, because one of the things I was prepared to talk about was whether or not that still affects us today. And I don't think it does. That resolution was a resolution in support of a plan, um, that was, used to be put in place back then. The resolution was backwards, it talked about all the whereas's, all the things that were gonna be done, and then the, in the end, it said, be it resolved that the city supports the plan. But it also provided that the city had the right to terminate that plan if it found that it didn't have the money. And I don't know what year they actually terminated the plan, but the resolution itself said that once that, that plan was not funded, then it ended all obligations of the city. That plan was exactly the kind of thing we don't want to do. Because when they adopted the plan, it was, uh, it was a plan to pay costs. They did not identify any kind of source of revenue for it. They didn't have an appropriation that was part of that. I don't think it was legal to do it that way, because I think you commit money with an ordinance, not with a resolution. And the charter back then, the old legislative charter specifically said that if you didn't have an appropriation to go along with every, I, every obligation that you incurred, then that obligation was null and void. So I think the 2007, um, has no more effect anymore, and I don't think it's enforceable at all. One thing we need to keep in mind is that, um, we did have an issue come up with the law enforcement contract, where because the law enforcement contract tried to commit the city for more than a year, but didn't allow the city an out by not funding it or by terminating it for inconvenience, the law enforcement contract was a debt that was not approved by the bond commission and was unenforceable. So I'm not sure that you can commit now what future councils are gonna do for insurance. I think this is probably something that you're gonna have to bring up every year, have, um, put it in the budget. You're gonna have to have a cost figure, you're gonna have to have an appropriation, like every other thing in the budget. It's gonna be an expense of the city that's gonna compete with other expenses of the city. So I don't think you can put something in place now to commit everybody in the future to fall in line and pay this thing forever, uh, without appropriating a permanent funding base for it, which I don't think we're prepared to do. One thing I really don't want to do is wind up in a situation where we do things without understanding what we're doing, without understanding the consequences and the commitments, and we wind up in court with our employees. Because that's a mess. Um, and I don't want to sound like the old guy, but I was involved in a lot of litigation years ago with city employees when we had changes of administration and changes of rules in the 90s. And we spent a lot of money successfully in court defending lawsuits by employees. But that's a mess, we certainly don't want to do that. But, um, it's, it's easy to say, if it costs this now, we're gonna pay this, we're gonna pay this, and that's gonna be the total. But I think you need an insurance professional to give you some estimate of what it's actually gonna cost. Because as your, as your insured population ages, it's gonna cost you more. As time goes by, all health insurance is gonna cost you more. And as you make it attractive for people to retire, they'll retire. You've got some employees now who've been around here forever, who I'm sure, if you made it easy for them to leave, they'd leave. But they're sticking around for the cheap health insurance. So I never was good at all those math equations that have a lot of different variables. And you got a lot of different variables in this one. So you really need some professional, uh, insurance advice to tell you what this cost is gonna be, so you can treat this like it is, an expense to be considered and appropriated for in the future. So I think you need some professional help if you're gonna pursue it at all.
Yes, ma'am.
That is why I thought we weren't gonna really talk about that this year. Uh, I said during the budget meeting that we, I was still, you know, uh, looking at it, we were still looking at it. But this wasn't a year for it, so I'm wondering why we bringing it up now, when it's not part of our budget. So we didn't say we were gonna do it this year, and then all of a sudden, it came up.
If everybody's going around, I'll give you an explanation, but I want everybody to be able to talk. This started because the pepper plex, and we're gonna do that in the next meeting, but I'll just say, in case somebody would stick around, we got a great rate of 1.6%, we floated a bond, that's gonna be a really cool project. We're not finished the pepper plex, we're gonna need some more money for that, okay? And I know that, that's phase one. Then I look at our roads. Yes, we're just beginning our road program of 12.5 million. But I'm, don't want to fall in the same trap of, we do a road program that we can afford, and then we wait 10 to 14 years before we do another one, and our roads fall back apart. We owe our citizens more than that. Well, I saw an opportunity. I do have an opportunity, and I'll just tell you about it real quick, to, there's a millage that we can go to an election in November, and we can, it's a renewal, it's not a new tax, okay? We would renew that millage and dedicate it to roads. But we need to do more than that to get our citizens to support that. There's about $1 million to pay off the debt, because this wouldn't happen for a couple of years. Why wait, because costs are only going up, number one? Number two, we have momentum that we're starting a road program. People will finally see after 12 years that roads are being improved. I don't want to stop, and I don't think you're gonna want to stop either. Well, then, I used the brain that I was given and said, how can I figure out a way we don't stop? Well, the way we don't stop is we renew that millage with the voters, but we put some skin in the game too. We take the mi, we've saved some money, we have put some money away, but we're not a bank. We put that money away for services to our community. So what we do is we take $1 million, and we pay that off early. We're only gonna do it if the voters approve it. The other thing we're gonna do is we're gonna take $3 to $4 million, and we're gonna put it in that road endowment account. Now we have a 20-year, if the voters give us that privilege, okay? We have a 20-year road program. No city around here has a 20-year road program. We have a road program that we can do $1.5 million worth of maintenance every year. We can wait a couple of years, we spend our 12.5 million, then we turn around and say, okay, we're gonna float another bond. We take half of the maintenance money of $700,000, we float $10 million. So within a year of finishing the 12.5 million, we can float $8 to $10 million and continue our road program. And remember, we needed 30 million, 35 million to really do all the roads. We're spending 12.5. You add that 10 million in, we're two-thirds of the way to redoing all of our streets, or the vast majority of them. And we have $750,000 every year to do maintenance we've never done. Well, I think it's a good idea, I was gonna bring it to you. Well, first thing I do is call my auditor, Bert. Burton brings me all kind of facts. Burton spits out very close to what Ricky came up with, that if this had continued to be funded, you would, you would be so far in the hole, you wouldn't be floating, you wouldn't have done the things that you've done since you were the mayor. It would not happen, okay? So he says it's not a good idea. He says communities who've done it, that are kind of trapped in it, they can't get out of it now, wish they would. They don't have the flexibility, the speed, and they can't bob and weave like we can, because they're committed to that. He was here tonight to say that. Then, poor William McWilliams' wife, I hope she's okay, has COVID. He works with Kevin, and they do a projection. And it shows, if everybody gets on the insurance, that our retirees, our insurance is gonna go up $1 million. Over 10 years, it'll go up $6 million. Well, four, four-point-something million, I'm sorry, four-point-something. Well, we don't have in the budget for that, we haven't funded that. Our $12.5 million bond costs us $900-something thousand a year, that's what we pay. So look at what we're leaving on the table that we could be doing for our citizens, between the one year it starts and the 10 years. None of us will be here in 10 years, okay, that we'll be going out of office, but projected for while we're here. So basically, that's millions of dollars that we could bond out. So we could finish our roads, we could finish our other projects. We, this is one of the best councils I've ever seen. And we have so many projects, from the ARPA projects, from the grant projects, from the community projects that we want to do. Well, the only thing that fuels that is money. So I don't want to promise one person in this town, we're gonna do something and not be able to do it. I don't want to promise one thing, that in a year or two, when costs go up, because we bit something up that's unfunded, we gotta start backing up. And the police were here, both the chief and the assistant chief, they were here to tell you that they really do appreciate the raises. But with the raises, the fact that our insurance is $2.58 for a family and $28 for a single person is the only reason we're still attractive in the police market. Because the combination of the raise that we gave, the raise just got us mediocre, got us to middle of the road. Our insurance is cheap. Do you know that our insurance went up $150,000 this year? I didn't even come to you to pass it on. But we could have, we could have passed that on, and those rates would go up. Any insurance we take on that's an unfunded mandate, then I have to try to keep the ball moving some kind of way. So what are we gonna come to? We're gonna come and say, we're gonna raise the insurance rates on the people that are here. The police department can't retire for 20 years, they three years old. None of them are, you know, so they have nothing in the game except to pay. Because none of them can retire for 20 years. But we're gonna start using those lo, young officers. When you say, well, make it more attractive for someone to retire, that's true. But now I'm paying for that retiree, and I have to replace them, and then I have young people leaving on the other end because the insurance go up, went up. Well, as the guy who runs the show every day and who runs the day-to-day, you, you messing up my workforce. People are leaving early, maybe people are coming, maybe they're not. I'm not holding on to the young people to get that institutional knowledge and to serve us, because they're not staying long, or they're not coming at all, because the insurance went up. That's one of our big, big calling cards across all the departments. I know that city employees and civil service employees don't make a lot of money. You know, you look at how other agencies handle it, their insurance costs two and three times more than we do every month. Yeah, they might give you something at the end, but they took it from you in the beginning. It's not fair for someone to go through a system, have free insurance, or $28 a month insurance for 40-something years, and then come back with a handout to say, now I want some more. Because we gave them the deal. The deal we gave them was, yeah, our pay structure is not the greatest because we're city government. But you have retirement, you have, well, now it's 14, you have 13 days off or 14 days off. You have sick leave, you have all these things, and you have very, very inexpensive insurance. So if you didn't pay in the system, how are you gonna get it at the end? I don't think it's fair. And then you're taking from our young employees to make them pay for it, so you're giving them something that, they never signed on for that. When people take a job, what's the first thing they ask you? Because believe me, I have interviewed a lot of people, and I've hired a lot of people. How much am I gonna make, and what are the benefits? They, we don't have a gun to their head, they don't have to come. But the combination of the auditor saying, it's not a good deal, don't do it. The combination of our bonding guy saying, you're not gonna be able to do many of the things you want to do, and you're lucky that you didn't have it prior to this, or you wouldn't even be where you are now. So when the bonding attorney, when Jeff brings up things that we could get sued for, when, you know, from age discrimination to you can't have a partial plan, you have to include everybody. So when my city attorney's telling me, caution, caution, I, I do stop and listen. Sometime, I know I give him a hard time, but I do listen to the man. When my bonding guy's telling me that, when my auditor's telling me that, when my police chief and assistant chief are telling me how it's gonna affect them, I have to bring it up. Because if I don't bring it up, I can't keep, I don't spend any of my own money, this is the citizens' money, we spend it together. But if we're gonna continue to provide services and to move this city forward, I have to look globally. And globally, it's 30,000 people, 29, whatever, but that's what we were elected to serve. If we're gonna, I came here to change this town. And what I love about my last council and this council is, y'all came to change it too. Y'all keep telling me the issues, we keep addressing them, we keep coming up with the ARPA plan, coming up with grants, coming up with money that we give back into the community, which is a beautiful thing, that's what we're supposed to be doing. Well, I want to continue that. But when you start holding up the money or putting roadblocks that we don't have to have right now... But when you start holding up the money or putting roadblocks that we don't have to have right now, then we're no longer serving the citizens at the capacity we could. And what we're doing is backing up and serving people, or looking at putting unfunded mandates on people that we already held our end of the deal up with. I love our retirees. They're very nice people. But that doesn't mean that we should give up what we're trying to do and the vision that we all have, to say, okay, well, I won't do all my roads, or I won't do another phase of the Pepperplex. Or I won't bond money out to do some kind of residential development, to get our population back up and to do new housing. I'll just forget about all of that because I, I need to, to fund that. I don't think we're fair to ourselves, to the potential that this council had, to the vision that y'all have. I don't make all this up by myself. I don't go in the corner and say, okay, I'm going to invent every kind of project and every kind of thing. I feed off of all of y'all. I feed off of the input, and you all do a great job of getting out in the community and, and finding out what people need. But it's a bigger picture than our 250 employees and the retirees, and the picture is the people we serve. But what I had done tonight was say, okay, I'm going to get all the professionals here, because I feel I've got this cloud on me. I have this cloud that I don't know that I can go forward with new programs and more programs, just like ARPA. We have to do all of these ARPA projects for two years after ARPA money's gone. Well, we got to pay for that. You know, we pay for that because we're frugal. We pay for that because we work hard at stretching the dollars we have. But anything that you say, oh, well, yeah, but now you got to pay for this, something got to give. So what I don't want to do is give up on anything we're doing in the community. I cherish every one of you. Whether I agree with you on this or I don't, I work with y'all, and we work very well together, and we are moving the ball. This is the first time that I feel, okay, I got to stop dreaming. I got to stop thinking of new projects and new things to move this city forward until I settle this. Because this is the first thing that's come to me that puts a, like I said, I've got something hanging over my head of, I don't know. I'm not going to promise anything. I don't know. I never have in my private business, and I won't do that from, from this platform. So for me, if every professional that we've hired that's done a great job for us for the five years I've been here, that you ratified and the previous council ratified, I had them here to say, don't, don't listen to me. Listen to them. You know, look at what they're going to tell you, and, and this is just a bad idea. It might be a thoughtful idea. It might be good for, you know, some people. But overall, as the guy who runs this as a business and who runs the day-to-day, this is just, it stinks as an idea. It's a bad idea. So I had all my professionals here. I have a few of them here. But, you know, I can reconvene them again, and, but I think that it's something we have to settle, and we should settle quickly. The reason I brought it up this year is because I would love to go and find a way to, and, and make this work. I'll do the dog and pony shows. I'll go to all the civic groups. I'll do whatever it takes to get us a continuous road program, because that's a very important issue. So I can call on people. We can look at it. Like I said, you got a letter from our insurance. You have some projections from both our insurance and our finance director. And all I can do, I can't speak, I can call up one of my bonding guys. I can't speak for Burton, because he's not here, except I can tell you what he said. I can't speak for the chief and the assistant chief, but I told you what he said. Jeff has made some comments from our legal. So that's kind of where I am, but that's my motivation. It's not to hurt anybody. It's not to have a giant, long meeting and a huge debate. It's just to say, we need to settle this, and it needs to go away. If it's not going to go away, you can expect changes, and they're not to the good. And then I need to reanalyze everything we've promised we're going to do, because I do not want, I'm not leading anybody on. So that's kind of an overview of how we got to where we are right now tonight. So I guess I can start the next round since my hands up. Councilman Reed, you had yours up first, and then I'll call on Councilwoman Ledbetter.
Okay, so I guess I'm trying to figure out, why do we feel like this is hanging over our head? Because we never, we'd never took a vote saying that we would do anything about insurance, not that I can remember. I mean, it was like, I guess I'm, I'm wondering why, why is this like something?
Because I was ready to bring you the road, the next phase of the road program, and I'm not going to bring it if I have to do this. I won't be able to afford it.
Okay, so I guess I'm, my question is, why do we even think we have to do it? Because it's not done now. I mean, it was canceled, so...
I have public records requests every week about this. I haven't talked to Councilwoman Ledbetter about it too, too much. We had a nice conversation the other day that I told her I was doing, because I called each one of y'all and said, I'm putting this on the agenda, and I tried to explain why. But I have public records requests every week. People are talking about it. I have employees that have been here a long time that are looking me cross-eyed, because they would like to have that insurance. I have young employees looking at me saying, maybe I should leave because the insurance would go up. I interview cops, and they're saying, yeah, don't you have something going on with the insurance? So it affects my day-to-day, and I'm supposed to run this place.
No, I'm just trying to understand.
I want to bring new ideas. I can't bring a new idea if I have an unfunded mandate hanging over my head. So it might not be hanging over your head, but it's hanging over mine to bring you other proposals, to say, hey, won't you? Everything I've brought y'all in my five years I've been here, including my last council, I had a way to pay for it. I had a money way to make it work, all right? Well, then, I'm going to get to a point that, until I know, when I got my professionals telling me, whoa, this won't work, dude. You know, you can't do this. If, if this comes and bites you, you're wasting my time. They're very nice about it, but that's basically what they're telling me. So when they're telling me, you got anything coming, how are you going to pay for it? Just like we talk, I mean, I've got a relationship with these guys and, and ladies. How are you going to pay for it? Here's your idea. Flesh it out for me. How are you going to pay for it? What are you going to do? Well, when I tell them, I think I can do this, this, and this, and they say, okay, it will bite you. So the only thing that bite me is if I got to pay for something that I don't have funded. This is the biggest thing, and, and every one of them raised a red flag. So when I have a red flag, I'm going to bring it, because it will stop me from bringing other projects in, in, that I know I can't pay for.
So have you had a discussion, like, with the employees to explain to them why we're not doing this? Why it, it, I mean, because I guess for me, it's like a conversation to be had with the employees to say, listen, we're not going to do this because of X, Y, Z. Someone's asking for a records request, and they want to spend their money buying copies, getting copies of stuff, so be it. But I guess, from my perspective, I don't, I guess I see it as something hanging over our heads, because we don't have to do anything if things stay status quo. And that would mean nothing changes. We're, it feels like in some ways, we're kind of borrowing a problem that may not even come to be a problem, because we don't have to do anything. Do you see what I'm saying? It's like, we don't have a problem right now, because we don't pay insurance for retirees.
Right.
So we don't have to do anything, and we can keep on moving with our programs.
But four votes will, and it keeps coming up. So if I see an issue, I'm, I'm very much like that in my private life, in every way that I am. I, I kill that issue, or if it has to come, it comes, and I plan around it.
And I, so let's be clear, I think...
Sorry, I don't...
No, I, I mean, I get it, but let's, let's be clear, the four votes to table, and maybe three. But it was more about, I need to understand the numbers, because numbers were put in front of us. And we didn't have a chance to look at it. So that's not saying that we want to provide insurance, or we don't want to provide insurance. It was, you put this in front of me, and I didn't get a chance to look at it. And so if I got to make a decision, I need to do what's right for all the people, my constituents in particular, and relook at these numbers, so I'm prepared to ask the right questions to make sure I understand before I take that vote. I don't, I guess I have a different perspective. I don't see this as a problem, because I don't feel like we have a problem. We don't have a problem, because we don't have insurance for retirees.
But I know it's going to come back up, and I don't want to make a huge commitment, knowing that, I mean, I, I, I work very well with Councilwoman Ledbetter. I love her to death. But she basically, if she says she's going to do something, she's going to do it. So she said, I didn't bring, I brought it before. I'm not bringing it this budget year, but we have three years left together. So I want to know, because I don't want to bite on a permanent road program, or semi-permanent, 20-year. I don't want to bite on a big road program and more bonds, and then two years from now, it comes back up. So my attitude was, before I commit to doing more, because we do, let me tell you, we do push. If you look at what we've got going on in the finances, we've, the money we've spent, we have worked very hard, but we do push. There are times that we have taken chances. There are times early on that our money was not right. I know the deficit we had when we got here. We took chances, and many of us took them together, to make things happen. We took financial chances, okay? But our ball is growing. Our projects are growing. We're spending more money than ever before. We're making things happen. So I can't be reckless. I have to understand what my risk are.
No, I get that. I mean, risk management is important in your business. It's just, it, I guess, again, I feel like we're kind of barring, I mean, because Councilwoman Ledbetter can bring it up, and the same thing could happen every time she brings it up, just like what happened last year. I mean, it's just, again, I...
I just thought I'd get a barometer of what was going to happen before I launched on a, on another program.
Okay, no, I get it.
Because it's probably our biggest one.
I get, I get what you're saying. I mean, I, I, I'm, you know, me, I'm all about the maintenance, so I love it. But I just, that's my thoughts.
Okay, that's fine. Who had their hand next?
If you don't mind if I just say a few words?
I don't know.
Yeah, no, all right. I know you, you all about numbers. Just being on the council with you, you all about contracts, all about numbers. But the way I'll see it as, numbers or no numbers, this could be detrimental in the future for everything that we want to do. So I'm with him. I, I'm kind of understanding where he's coming from. I can't agree. I wouldn't want to put a commitment as far as a road program or anything. If we know on the back end of the deal that we're going to have something coming, and we don't know what it's going to be. So that's, and I've learned that in business, as far as, if you don't know what's going to happen tomorrow, don't go make a promise to someone else, and then you're not going to be able to fulfill it. So that's just, that's my opinion, and that's why I stand in there.
Okay.
That's it. Thank you.
And my, and my thing is, this wasn't on our agenda for this year at all. We had talked about it in budget meeting amongst ourselves. It wasn't really out, of course, our budget meetings are open, but...
Yeah.
It wasn't out there this year. So I don't, I don't see it as a problem for us moving forward in any way, because it's not for this year. So why are we talking about it now? That's my thing. Why does it, why did it come up right now? I don't think we needed to talk about it right now, because...
In good conscience, I can't bring you more projects and more debt if I think it's going to come back up.
We would talk about it before all of that, behind closed doors, pretty much, and decided it was going to come up. Or not.
Can we call for a question?
Sir?
Yes, can we call for a question?
What is the motion?
Yeah, what's the motion?
I think there's a motion.
We don't have a motion.
We don't have a motion.
We're going to do everything we never did tonight. Hang on one second, please. I would rather have more discussion. Councilwoman Ledbetter has a floor.
I say we don't have a problem. I agree with Councilwoman Reed. You know, you making it, you making it a problem. And maybe it is your problem, but it's not our problem right now.
But it will be when I bring you something. So I'm trying to be proactive by saying, hey, I got this thing right here.
It definitely won't this year, and it may not be next year. It depends on what's going on.
When we make a 20-year commitment, okay, with another bond, I, I can't have it come up later and say, oh, well, you know, Freddie, you have to figure out how to pay for it. That's, that's my issue.
I, I just don't see it like that, that, you know, if I was to bring something up...
When you sit here every day trying to figure out how to make ends meet and still move the ball forward, I have to think like that.
But we would, we would. If we were going to do it, we would come up with a plan that we could live with. That's not on the agenda right now. You're talking about bonding out and doing a lot of projects. I'm all for that. So I just don't see why we're talking about this tonight and just pushing it out there for no good reason. I'm finished.
Okay. Anybody else have any other discussion?
Freddie, I already said, I said, look, I'm an old, I'm an old country boy. I grew up around the railroad tracks. I love quotes. That makes sense. I love quotes. That makes sense.
You do.
We used to jump the train, but we never jumped on a fast train. I don't like fast-moving trains, and this is kind of fast for me. I said, man, let me just breathe, and again, that's why I, 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 you know, take it.
Yeah, that's fine. And look, I'm not, I'm not faulting anybody for their position.
No, 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 I know, I know.
And I'm trying to be as clear as I can on my position, and I'm listening to all y'all.
I've learned a lot tonight, though. I tell you, I'll tell you that much. I've learned a lot tonight.
Yes, sir.
I don't think that, I mean, this is an opportunity to bring it up if there's a plan that could be floated and discussed and decided on. I don't think this is going to end the discussion, because I think it's going to come up later again. But I think if the council decided to do this, it would regret it. I think you already went through this experiment once a number of years ago, and it failed. I think if you started this, you would wind up with a big expense and more controversy than you've got now by far. And I think you need to be real skeptical about projections of future expense that don't come from professionals. And maybe the way to look at this is to say, okay, we're moving on. We're moving on with the other projects. We're moving on with the other priorities. If somebody brings up a plan, we'll talk about the plan. If it can get enough votes, if the mayor wants to veto it, he can veto it. But maybe, maybe we need to just move on. Because I don't see a resolution of this thing, I don't see the council deciding not to do it. I don't see the council deciding to do it. We're cutting that dog's tail off a little bit at a time.
Like a centimeter at a time. I see it. I feel it.
Yeah, and it's just, it's, it's...
Then ask me this, because I feel I'm responsible for bringing it. I wanted this discussion, because I spent our money responsibly. So this is an item that I still think will come out and could potentially bite us later, after we've gone down a road. So I guess my question to every one of you, because we're in this together. I don't look at y'all as adversarial in any kind of way, and we might disagree, but so what? We're going to be friends before and after, and we're going to work well together.
Always.
So always. That's something that we've done more than once, okay? I enjoy that, okay? I mean, I'm complimenting you for that, you know? So my question is, and I guess is why I brought it up, so let's get to it right now. Do I take the chance, because you're taking the chance with me? Do I take the chance, and I keep going down the road with as many projects as I feel I can fund and I feel I can do, knowing this might bite us, and y'all telling me, we've got three years together, okay? I'm looking at each one of y'all in awe. So you're telling me, we'll find a way to work it, and if this does come back up, you have to think about all the things we have to fund and everything that we have to do, and everything that we've bitten off. And if you bite off a big bite, you got to chew it, and you got to swallow it. So you well could want to do this in a year or two, and I'm going to tell you, no, we can't, if the finances don't work, because it's an unfunded mandate. It's something that my professionals that I trust very much say, don't do it. So they're telling me, don't do it now. I'm pretty sure they're going to tell me, don't do it later. So I guess I wanted to put it out there and say, we put it to bed for now. Deidre and I had that conversation. I said, Deidre, you can bring it back up, and bring it back up later. You know, bring it back up in a year. But the barometer I need is right now for me to hit the bricks and get my ass moving and make some more things happen. I got to know right now it's not going to come bite me. I don't have to know forever, because nothing is forever. Anything this government does, this government can undo, okay? But I need to know right now that what I wanted was right now, go make your plans, go spend the time, go take the professionals that were here and use them, because they have to put time in, and not every deal that they do comes across. Sometimes they put money in and time in and don't get it. But I needed to feel that I wasn't wasting anybody's time to go after a bigger road program and another bond with a way to pay for it. But if this bites us later, I might well say, okay. And I don't want to veto anything if I don't have to. I'd like to make my whole 12 years without vetoing it. But I wanted to set the pick that if this comes, and when I meet with my professionals, and they say, you've gone down the road, you floated this bond, you've done this and that, and between Burton, our auditor, and our Jason Akers, and all the professionals, and my insurance professionals, and they say, don't do it, you're going to have to veto it. I wanted it out there already that this is why I'm doing it. I wanted it now, when it wasn't really a heated issue, when it was just an issue and a discussion item, which is what it is, that you tell me, you're good for now. I want it out there that, you know, it's not about, it's about the big picture. It's about where we can head as a city. I want it out there, you tell me to keep going, and this might be something that doesn't happen because of the financial obligations we incur along the way.
That's right.
Because everybody blame me later. I don't want somebody coming, oh, of us, in the public, I got to take what I got to take, okay? But I don't want, this is my team. I don't want Deidre coming two years later saying, you know, I would have done it, and now you've, you've spent the money. Or I've done it, but now you've put us in, because you voted every turn what to do. You can always vote no and say, I don't want to do another road program. But I just wanted it out there, because we're right at the cusp of being able to do a whole lot more stuff, or at least the potential to do a whole lot more stuff. And I just need to know if that's, you know, the direction. I guess in a way, I wanted permission to ramp it up. I'm not done. I mean, you know, I'm, don't elect a contract if you don't want a project. I'm here to move this city forward and fix our issues. So I needed to hear, and that's why I put it, you know? Start your engine and keep moving. That's what I need to know.
I think you probably heard a little of us saying, we don't have an issue, so keep moving forward. Because we don't have an insurance problem today, and we don't have, we don't foresee having one anytime soon. So we need to keep moving forward the way we are. We all want maintenance on the roads.
Can I say something?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, Ricky.
No, no, you go ahead.
I just got a comment to... Are you saying, and don't divide the council that's doing great things?
Are you saying, and don't divide the council that's doing great things?
What I'm saying is that, I- I guess, I understand where Freddie's coming from.
And that's just what I'm saying, that's just my thoughts.
My, we're not divided, because-
We're not.
We're not, we all want the road program, I haven't heard anybody say they don't want the road program. We don't have an insurance issue. We are not, we don't have anything proposal on the table saying, let's implement this for the employees. So we don't have, it's a non-issue, we move forward where we're going. That's our direction, if somebody, some chance it comes up later, then we take it up then, if we have, we have incurred enough debt that we can't afford to do this, we can't afford to do it. But it's based on the decisions we're making now, we're moving forward with our road program. That, it's not an issue till we actually have a proposal in front of us. And then we make that decision, based on where we are financially. But right now, we can just move forward with what we're doing.
Some chances in our problem.
It's not our problem.
Yeah.
Oh, he was, he asked me a question.
Yeah, 'cause I just want, 'cause I wanted, 'cause I'm saying that, I hear both of y'all saying, you know, sound like I'm hearing y'all say, kick the can down the road a little bit, and keep our council moving in the direction they were moving, uh, because, uh, this insurance issue isn't a problem, I know, I wasn't thinking about it.
Right, the can is already down the road.
So.
The can's down the road, we, we brought it back, Freddie brought it back.
I did, 'cause I wanna kick that, excuse me, I wanna kick your first.
So it's down the road, if it even ever come, if we even meet up with it, you know, we may never even meet up with it.
Alright.
That's all I'm saying.
Alright, uh, I think, who had their hand up first, Mr. Resort, you good with that?
Oh, lawyer, Mr. Jeff Simon, you had the right idea, until we have a locomotive behind this thing, like the oil industry come back. Yeah, if it come back like it was way back, when they had the program, probably fifteen, twenty years ago. We had money with the oil in Yarberia. But until we change something at the president level, and something changes, you know, we in a bind. But we don't need this bind to be put on our head, for the next weeks to come, that it keeps promoting, to, to put this on the table. Let's, uh, let's clear it up now, that it's off the table for quite a while, so that Mr. Mayor can go on with his business. And every week, you come, every two, every meeting or two, you come up with an exciting idea, Mr. Mayor, and we don't wanna stop you. So that's what we're trying to do now, is find a locomotive, when it comes to town, push, we'd be glad if they got a lot of money, to give them the money. But until we have that locomotive pushing it forward, we can't do it. A lot of other places have a lot of trouble, right now. Lot of little towns, Baldwin, little towns, about to go out of business.
Genere.
Genere's about to go out of business almost. So we hate to talk like that.
Genere has a great mayor.
I'm just saying, until they get the funds.
Don't go there.
He gets the funds, you know? But I'm with you, Mr. Mayor, uh, that you don't need that on your head every two weeks, that somebody's talking this. Keep your programs going forward. Until we get the locomotive.
I'm looking for one, uh, Dustin, I'm calling you, thank you, Mr. Resort.
So, my question is, can we adopt a resolution of some sort, to nip it in the bud, like, be done with it? Not have the discussion in the, my next three years up on this council? I don't know if that's the way y'all would like it to be, but is that something that we can do yet?
Anybody can bring?
I don't think, as a practical matter, you can take a whole topic off the table forever.
I don't think any-
And somebody can bring up one proposal this week, and another proposal, or another proposal, or another proposal.
'Cause I set the agenda, but I have an open agenda, I have never told any of y'all, or any of my last council, that they could put something on the agenda, 'cause I had that happen to me, and I didn't like it. So I will never say you can't put something on the agenda, so, we can't blanket anything. You can give me a feel of how it is right now, and I can keep moving.
So you basically just want our word, in other words, you're basically trying to feel the council out.
I just needed to see where everybody was at, and I said, I'm gonna put it on, and I'm gonna see where I'm at, because there are behind-the-scenes things going on that I don't like, and I, I got, I got something on my head. I like it on my head, I don't operate one that way. Yes, sir.
I mean, I think, I think you're saying, speak up, or I'm moving on.
Yeah.
And I think it's time to move on.
I do too. I do too. Brooke, you have anything, I don't think you-
Yeah, I was just gonna say, uh, I believe the reason you brought it up is so that you can know if you can continue with presenting more projects to spend money on.
Yes, sir.
Because if we approve the insurance, then, of course, that's gonna be a big chunk of money that we have to make sure that we have. Okay, I was just clarifying that that's why you brought it up, okay?
That's the only reason, not, not just in, you know.
Not to overspend.
It's a good discussion, but I mean, I didn't do it, to cause just a discussion.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, with, with all due respect, in my position is, and from what I'm hearing is that, I'm not willing to vote on any more bonding, or of any more money, on a road program, or any other issue, in putting this city in more debt, until this issue is resolved, and voted on tonight. I need to feel just like you. So, I just can't have a council that doesn't know where they wanna provide retirees, and spend additional money on roads, and other things moving forward, and going to debt. 'Cause I think it's just, it's not fiscal, being fiscal responsible. So with that being said, I'd like to make a motion that we support Resolution twenty-two dash thirteen, do not, do not provide health insurance for retirees of the city in Yarberia.
Okay, so. So I have a motion on that?
Second, second.
Well, I didn't know the discussion was over.
Oh.
It doesn't have a question.
Make it a motion, I'm trying to-
Okay.
Okay, so, I never had this happen, except when I was the pro temp, so if you call for the question, anybody can call for the question, and debate stops? I- I'm asking, 'cause I, I really, I know that's how it worked the one time, I- I saw it before, but what's the rule?
I can look up the rule. But you have, you have a motion, and you have a second. And ordinarily-
'Cause I know you can table and not do anything, which we did earlier, but I don't know if you, I just wanna understand.
Freddie, can I ask a question, to, I guess to you and maybe, one of y'all can answer. If we kill this, does it, if we kill it now, does it, can it come up again?
Yeah, you can bring anything back up, if you want to.
So, that was my question, so why are we voting on something that can come up next week, we don't have a problem?
Then there shouldn't be a problem voting on it, I guess, either way, I guess you could look, no, chicken or egg, you could look at it either way.
We're being asked to vote to say, uh, that we're gonna kill it.
It's like that with anything, though, anything we vote on, I learned a long time ago, anything government does, you can undo. Anything. Except once you're in debt, you can't, you can't back up, you gotta pay your bills. But anything we do, we can undo at any given time. I just wanted a barometer to note, if I should keep rolling.
Isn't the discussion enough, why do we have to take a vote? I mean, 'cause the discussion, basically, we're saying, we don't have an issue, we don't have a retiree program. Let's move forward with our projects, that's what we're focused on.
So you're saying, kill the agenda item?
I'm saying, yeah, 'cause we don't have a problem.
Yeah, well, well-
So-
I think you have a motion and a second.
Correct.
And this is discussion.
And this is discussion, and you need to vote.
So, my thing was, why didn't we just leave it where it was on the table? You know, and we took it off of the table for discussion, but now we had a motion again for the same thing we put it on the table for. You know, and it's not an issue, so why are we voting on it, on something that's not in our budget, that we really haven't taken a good look at? So why are we trying to take it off of something where it's not, it's never been there?
'Cause if we, if you, if we force a vote, then-
I know, what, what?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I know, I'm trying to-
Okay.
I'm done.
Okay, you're done. Okay, Councilor, I'm just trying to keep it moving.
No, I'm sorry, you were right, I didn't know if she had, you know-
I never know either.
So-
I'm good.
If we force a vote on something that we have not had a chance to review, then, even though I may not be for putting an insurance program in place today, or any time in the future, because I like the direction we're moving, and I think the roads are very important to all of our citizens, uh, but I don't feel comfortable taking a vote on something, you asked me to vote on something I haven't even reviewed. To me, that's not, that's not the way that I would like us to do it, because we don't have an issue, and we haven't had time to review this, it doesn't need to force this vote. We don't need to force a vote. That's just my thoughts.
Okay, thank you.
I just, and I just think that, what I've heard from the mayor and, and the leadership, is that he, he's not willing to take any more risk moving forward, until he gets an idea where this issue's gonna go. So, so by taking a vote, he gets an idea where this council stands on retirement. Now, we can't, we can't say, like Ms. Ledbetter, you can't say, oh, we can take it up next year. Ladies and gentlemen, interest rates are going up, materials going up, roads are getting more expensive. If we don't act, we get less dollars for what we invest in. So it's not about waiting later and talking about retirement. Your leader, your mayor, wants to do a road program for this city, he just said it. He wants to get involved, engaged, and do roads. When you guys go out and knock on doors at your houses, what is the number one thing they say? Roads. That's my thing, roads, 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 we're trying to fix it. He just said he can't move forward without an answer to this question, and provide something that all of y'all constituents want. They want their roads fixed. So that's my initiative, let's get a call and a vote, see where we stand, so this mayor can make a decision to move our road program forward, and provide for our constituents. That's why I wanna make a vote.
And I think this vote would be, at this time, the council's not gonna take any action on this.
Right.
And it's not gonna bind you in future discussions, you can bring it up later.
As I keep saying, anything we do, we can undo, but it does give me a barometer, and I can proceed, and I can go further, finding ways to pay for something, not incurring new debt, 'cause I think I have a way to pay for it, that it would not be a new tax, and I think I have a way to make it move forward. But I wanted to put every one of you on notice, and I wanted, what I wanted to vote for was to say, okay, well, you can bring it back up later, but we have spent some of the money. Some of the money has, has been committed to other stuff. Because when you look at our budget right now, we have a good balance, and it's thanks to all of you. And it's thanks to my department heads, and my finance director, and all of us working together. But I wanna move in a direction that some of that money is gonna get spent, it's gonna get put back where it belongs, in the citizens, it's gonna be invested in our town. So I just want, all I wanted was you to know, this is the direction I'm heading in, and if and when this could come back up, there's a few people pushing it, I do get public records requests, it doesn't go away in my mind, 'cause you don't work there every day, that I got Aaron saying, I got another request, and I got people working on stuff, and they're saying, oh, well, I'm having to work on this, or I'm having to put together something for a progress records request, and it's always on this issue. So my attitude is, I just felt that if I had a vote, and you, you decided the majority, that I'm moving on, then I'm moving on. And you know what, I know you can bring it back. And I'm not telling you can't, Deidre and I had that discussion when, when we talked about it. She said she could table it, and I said, yes ma'am, you can follow the Robert's Rules of Order, you could, I told you that. You can do whatever you wanna do, as long as you have the votes. So my attitude was, if I got an answer, if I got an answer, then I was moving on. And moving on, as, as I always do, you know, shift the gears and go. And if it does come back up, it would be different, because I think that some of the money will be committed. Less than, we, we, we have a good balance, but it's gone down some with this road bond, and every time we take on something, I won't go further than my auditors and my bonding company tell me to. That's why I have professionals, why I listen to them. If they tell me, you're taking too much risk, or you're letting the balance go lower than you should, I'm not gonna do it, I wanna clean audit every year. I didn't run the day-to-day to, to run it in the ground. So for me, I just wanted this, that it let me move forward, and when they come back and say, you, you can only spend X amount of dollars now, or if your unbalance goes below this, you're not as solvent as you were, I want to be able to look at y'all in the eye and say, okay, we made that decision together. That's, I can't put any blame in it.
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't see, at all, how taking this vote tonight is gonna stop any problems that you have in right now. I don't see that. Because even if we vote yes or, or no on this issue, you still might have the same problem. And then we brought all this up tonight, and we've been here, I don't know how long.
But boy, we had a good discussion.
Yes, for nothing, though. You know, for absolutely nothing, 'cause we don't have a-
This would mean the plan.
We didn't have a proposal for this, it's not even on the budget this year, so why are we even wasting our time talking about this right now? We wasted a bunch of time, because you having an issue, with somebody giving you record requests, and people looking at you, funning you, saying it and all. We don't have that problem, it's true, but it ain't gonna stop, stop the people from doing that.
No, but with, I don't really-
Whether we vote, one way or the other.
I don't really worry about that, what I worry about is this council, 'cause we're a team, and I worry about that I'm going in the direction that you're not gonna come after, I've spent a ton of energy, and a ton of time, and a whole lot of professionals' time, and then pull the rug out from under me and say, I don't wanna do that, I wanna go in this other direction. So that's all I got, as far as for the people, that, they don't bother me. That's not what bothers me, what bothers me is, I feel that if I'm gonna get, if I'm gonna spend the time of my professionals, and spend my time, and my staff's time, and a whole lot of people, making plans, and very soon going to civic groups, going to, you know, going around this community like I need to do, and asking y'all to do the same thing in your districts, and all of that, then I'm just not doing it for something that's gonna end up getting derailed. And that's all I wanted. I mean, as far as for the knocks, poof, that's why I got a job, I'm here because I got problems, I realize that.
So to, tonight, I, I think, you know, you kinda split, you split us again, you know, for no reason.
That's your opinion, but that's not mine. I'm trying to keep us a team by talking about it.
But then, you know, if I, if I really wanted to cause a problem, I'd put it on the agenda next month, we have the discussion all over again. You know, put it on the next-
And you have the right to do that.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying, is, is, is not, it has no, nothing to do with the budget this year, because we weren't even looking at that, this year.
You're not making budgetary commitments, and could well be making budgetary commitments this year.
Yeah, but-
Well, so that we just, we're just sitting different, we're just sitting different chairs.
If we were to do, if we were to do this, we would find ways to pay for it.
Well, maybe, but there'll be a point that I can't, I'm not a magician. And so, uh, we're just sitting different chairs, we just have a different outlook on, on this issue.
I thought we pretty much gave you, uh, the go-ahead to, to, you know, full throttle, and you seemed like, no, I can't do it unless we have this vote.
Well, this is something new. That I just think it's a big commitment. But if you don't want me to be cautious, I, I'm really not cautious by nature, I'm trying to do the best I can to do a job that I am as responsible as I can be, 'cause by nature, pal, my private life, I'm not very cautious, I, I admit that, if you know me, you know that. So, I brought it on the air caution that I need to talk to my council and see what's going on, I like to do it publicly.
And we told you how we felt, I thought.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I have a much better, I, I, I'll tell you all this, okay, and I know we do need to end this. I have a much better understanding, I hope y'all understand where I'm coming from, and if you don't, it's okay. But I have a much better understanding of where y'all are on this issue, that, you know, I, I thought was important. I mean, everything y'all put, I don't always think is important, I love y'all to death, but there are times that we spend an hour on something that I could say, whoa, I don't know, I didn't think that was, but I, I don't do that, because I respect y'all, we in it together. So if I wasted an hour of your time, or an hour and a half, I'm sorry, but, uh, I think it was a good discussion. But I understand if you don't agree.
And to me, that's the way it should've stopped, at the discussion point.
Yes, ma'am, yes, Jeff.
But you have a motion, and you have a second.
Yeah, I know I do.
And we're never gonna get out of here.
Yeah, I know, and we got another meeting after this.
Unless we vote on that, so, uh, this is not gonna decide how it's gonna be discussed, or not discussed in the future for all time, 'cause it's gonna come back up, if people wanna bring it back up. But it's a sense of what the council thinks tonight, about whether or not we need to make room for this at this time.
That's all I wanted.
So I think you need to vote on the motion.
Hey, calling for the question?
Okay, well, about twenty minutes ago, we called for the question, and I asked the question of, does that stop all debate, and do we have to vote? I, I never really got that answer.
We just went back with the discussion.
I know, we just started discuss, somebody started discussing, so, I agree, we need to figure that out, but-
You need to vote, you need to vote.
Okay, so if somebody calls for the question, and on anything, we gotta stop and vote.
Shut everything down.
Discussion ceased.
So can we, can you tell us what we're voting on, again, 'cause now I'm getting confused about what we're actually voting on? Because now I'm getting confused about what we're actually voting on.
Right now, as I understand it, and, and I can be corrected...
Based on what's in the information.
The second is for the resolution that's in place in here, that at this time, we're not going to look at insurance retirement. Insurance for retirees, I'm getting tired. That's what's on the floor.
Aaron, is that the, that's the motion?
Is that the motion?
It's the motion in the packet, 22-13.
No, but what did Ricky say? Because that's the motion.
Yeah, Ricky, you said basically not, I'm just switching words in your mouth.
On the Resolution 20, not to provide health insurance for retirees.
In this reading?
At this time.
Do you want me to read it?
Yeah, please.
Okay.
Yeah, please do.
Therefore, be it resolved, finding the cost for retiree insurance funds are indefinite and prohibitive. The mayor and the New Iberia City Council for the City of New Iberia, Louisiana, will not implement a plan for the provision of health insurance to retirees.
Explain the double.
Okay.
Green or red?
So a yes vote means that we're not gonna do the insurance at this point?
Yes, if you vote yes, if that's what you do at this time, we're not gonna do it.
Yes is not.
We got the motion, we got the second.
So here's my, my, my caution with the, the resolution, the way it's written, it's basically saying it's cost prohibitive, right? So, it's cost prohibitive when we haven't looked at costs. So we're voting on something where we don't have the information. And I know we, maybe it's because the guys weren't able to speak tonight, um, but...
Well, that, that put a damper on it.
Basically, is, am I understanding it correctly? We're basically saying it's cost prohibitive.
Well, and, if I can speak, and, and if you disagree, you vote no.
Agreed, I'm just trying to understand, we're saying it's cost prohibitive.
Well, that's the motion. And, and it, it could be that the body will agree, and it could be the body will disagree.
But the, the, the resolution does not have in it what those costs are, so that we know that they're cost prohibitive.
Then you vote against it.
Okay, all right, I just, just for clarification, I'm just trying to understand why we need to take the vote.
Okay, well, right now, I had a call for the question, and I have a second. So...
Yeah, we need to vote.
Okay, then I ask you to please vote your machines. All right, thank y'all. Now we move to, I don't even know where we are. Oh, councilors' remarks, uh, start with Brooke.
So my pocket park is finally done, it looks great. Um, if y'all ever get a chance, go on Santiago Drive and check it out, it's really nice. And I look forward to looking at all of everyone else's park renovations as well. That's it.
Thank you.
Yeah, ma'am, we had an amazing, uh, MLK event yesterday, the renaming of, um, well, the dedication of, uh, Hopkins Street, uh, in the name and honor of Dr. Martin Luther King, uh, Jr. Uh, we renamed them, we, again, we dedicated Martin Luther King Memorial Parkway. Uh, it was an amazing event, like to thank everybody who came out, um, that's all I have.
Thank you.
First meeting, I refrain from saying anymore.
Just briefly, um, I was fortunate with my colleagues to attend the exit issues this morning with the state legislators, thought we got some great information. Uh, you know, I picked up on a few things that, you know, redistricting's really hot and heavy right now, and, because something we have to pay attention to, and obviously, I think we all picked up that the state's pretty flush with money, and, and we need to be prudent about trying to go get our share, and I think the mayor does that very diligently, but I think, uh, trips by others to bad news may be necessary this year, I think it may be beneficial. And, uh, you know, I think they have their, their hearts in the right place, and if we stay in contact with our legislators, we'll, we'll benefit highly.
I passed tonight.
So, um, you know, like Marlon said, we had a great program yesterday, it was really nice. Um, I also like to let everybody know that the Downtown Neighborhood Association is going to have an event on February 12th. For anyone who is trying to, uh, apply for the weatherization grant, and maybe you're not sure how to fill out the paperwork, we're gonna be at the Masonic Hall from 10 to 2, and we will help people fill out the paperwork. So if you need help, please come out, 10 to 2, February 12th, um, we will help anybody in the city. So, um, we'd love for you guys to come out and join us. Um, the other thing I will say is, I really hope we get a maintenance program on the roads. No, I, I mean, I, I always felt that way. I mean, I've been asking for it since we started talking about roads. I think it was a good discussion, I don't think we have a problem, and I'm just, I'm hoping that people will see that we do take our job seriously, we don't make these decisions lightly, um, we have very interesting discussions, um, we don't always agree, but I think we're all on the same page when we say that we want to move this city forward, we want good roads all throughout the city, and, um, and that we all support moving that, in that direction. Thank you.